Okay. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. So as a first order of business, is there anybody here for public input for something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. We have no student report tonight, and so I think we'll just jump ahead so we don't have to keep all of our guests waiting. They've served this community long enough, they don't have to stay longer. So Julie Kopke, who's here tonight, was the one that came up with the idea last summer about trying to recognize the people that put so much time into the school and, you know, give a little bit of public acknowledgement. So, you know, we thank her for that idea, and I think we all 100% support that, so we're glad that people are here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bernard to say a few words, if he will, about the people here that are, have given so much time to us.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. So the folks we have here tonight are to be honored for their service to North Reading. Total 100.5 years of service, 100 and a half years, so that's really, that's tremendous. And before I speak a little bit about each one of them, we did, unfortunately, we had two staff who were not able to be here this evening. Linda Pescioni is retiring from the math department at the middle school tomorrow, and Laurie McBride, a kindergarten teacher at the little school, also was not able to be here. And lastly, Paula Bugley, a special education paraprofessional at the middle school. I will be going to the middle school's reception tomorrow to present both Linda and Paula a gift on behalf of the committee, and we certainly wish them well. So I thought, just by way of introduction to the five people who are here this evening, I would start with the fewest years of service and go up to the most years of service. So Helena Meyer is first with 10 years of service at our middle school. I actually, I think, made contact, you made contact with me, Helena, back when I was the high school principal, and I recommended you to John Fochet for a position at the middle school. We have, Helena and I have a mutual friend, and she's done a very, very nice job at our middle school, teaching as a reading specialist and an English language arts teacher. Prior to coming to North Reading, Helena had worked also in the Wakefield and Linfield public schools, and she told me just tonight that she was a member of the Linfield School Committee many years ago. So, a very nice person, a very talented teacher. We're going to miss you, Helena. We will have a gift to present on behalf of the committee to each of you, but maybe I'll go through each person first and maybe take a photo for the paper as well. Next up with 18 years of service is Jane Whitney, retiring from the high school in the special education department. Jane was one of the first people I met when I came to North Reading as the high school principal, and I remember you helped transition a new teacher in my request that we were expanding our special education department at the high school from one teacher to two. It's hard, it's hard to believe, in 2003, that's what the special education staff made up, but a graduate of North Reading High School and having worked in the special education department since 2000. Jane, you're going to be missed, having been a very talented person, working in our alternative education center, the learning center, very supportive of children. I want to thank you very, it's been a pleasure working with you, so thank you. And just slightly ahead of Jane, someone I also came to get to know very well, working at the high school with 18 and a half years, is Karen Adams, who retired mid-year this year after 18 and a half years of service as the nurse at the high school. Karen, I'm glad you were able to come back tonight. I know you've been retired for a few months, it was nice for you to make time, so thank you for that. And next is Eric Foreman with 19 years. Eric has had a perennial smile now for about what, probably about six months anyway, right? And has gone through many testimonials in the last few months from his music boosters, band students, and, you know, it's funny when you, as long as I've worked with Eric, I learned something about him when we held his retirement party, and we learned, I learned that Eric was an avid bowler, Mr. Webster was there, and I never knew that about you, Eric, all these years. And I think most everyone knows that Rob, and Eric's wife, also works for the school department as a secretary in the athletic office, and she's promised me she's not retiring anytime too soon.
Dave Johnson today asked me to assure that she would be leaving.
Yes, I have it in writing, Mr. Webster.
Just checking on that.
She's not going, so Eric, congra-
Congratulations.
So congratulations to you, Eric, thank you very, very much. And let's see, lastly, with 35 years of service, all in North Reading, Joanne, correct? Wow, 35 years of service to the North Reading Public Schools. Joanne Coughlin was first hired as an elementary music teacher in 1983. I don't want to make you feel bad, Joanne, but I graduated high school in 82. Sorry. She's worked at the Batch Elder, the Little and the Hood Schools, got certified in instructional technology in the early 2000s, taught music from 2001 to 2002 at the middle school, became a computer teacher at the middle school in September of 2004, and has since that time been a technology integration specialist, and lastly, as a digital learning specialist, and has really been one of those cogs in the wheel of moving digital learning in this district pretty, pretty speedily and with great advancement the last few years. So, Joanne, it's been a pleasure working with you, thank you very much. So continuing with the tradition, this is a little bit of a new thing tonight, where we are, have invited you all to the school committee to be recognized. But something that is not new, and we're continuing with the tradition, is placing a book in a school library that you've chosen. And what I did at the last meeting when we honored the elementary people that were retiring is I shared with, with the community and those in attendance at this meeting a little bit about why you selected the book that you did. So Eric, I think yours is on top here, so just for your benefit, what Anne Lundell, my administrative assistant, has done is created a nice inscription, and this is on the book now, and it will go in the high school library for anyone that comes in to take the book out will know that it was dedicated and you're honored, Eric, and you're certainly welcome to take, take a look at this. And we ask people why it is that they selected the book that they have selected, why it's one of their favorites. And what Eric wrote about this book entitled Findings by Leonard Bernstein is, it is a self-portrait that collects private notes, letters, essays, and musical writings to convey the incredible energy, talent, and genius of a man who has confirmed that maturity and originality of American music. Very nice, Eric, thank you so much. And then next is the book that Joanne Coughlin has selected, and it's probably one that a lot of us know, I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, Maya Angelou. And what Joanne wrote about why this book is her favorite is that Maya Angelou is her hero. This memoir is a testament to her spirit, humor, and courage to survive and rise above personal and cultural adversity. Angelou's humble, turbulent childhood and her rise as an internationally renowned writer and political activist is proof that anything is possible. And this will go in the high school library at your request, Joanne. And again, you have also the, kind of a little inscription that Anne does a nice job with, so thank you. And next we have the book that Helena Meyer selected. Helena, the book is Fish in a Tree by Linda Moleley Hunt. And why it is one of Helena's favorites is she writes that she enjoyed this book because she found it to be inspirational and a feel-good book that offers encouragement to students who struggle academically and demonstrates that, quote, "A disability does not equal stupidity." It is a story of friendship and sensitivity, and she has asked that this book be placed in the library at the middle school, so Helena, thank you very much. Karen Adams. Karen Adams RN. The Help, it's also made into a movie, right?
Yep.
It was made into a movie, I think, too, not that long ago, The Help. Catherine Stockton, and what Karen wrote about why this book is one of her favorites is she found the book to be fascinating. It spoke of black maids in the 1960s in white southern homes, it spoke of strong bonds and friendships that formed no matter what color one's skin is. So this will be at your request, Karen, placed in the high school library. Thank you. And lastly, this is an interesting choice, Jane, I love, I love this. Les Misérables, Victor Hugo. A wonderful story about integrity in the face of oppression and, of course, love and faithfulness. So this will be going in the, in the high school library. So you're all, you know, if you want to take a look, you're welcome to do that. So thank you all very much. And I think, Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have a committee for each of our retirees, with the exception of Karen, who got her gift when she retired mid-year, and I presented her gift at that time, so if you want to-
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, again, thanks Julie for coming up, this is idea, because it was nice to honor the elementary staff last week and then middle and high school this week. And the thing that has impressed me the most is the little stories they wrote to accompany the books that they donated. All, I don't know how many you had last week, but every single one of them was touching and personal, and I think that sums up this school district.
Yeah, do you want one by one come down, or do you want to?
We can have them all come down.
Everybody come down.
Yeah.
Everybody just come down together. Karen should come, come too, yeah.
You're welcome to open these if you'd like, or?
I don't believe you're really leaving.
Of course, thank you.
I will just tell you that-
Thank you.
Sorry, my kids don't let any of you.
Eric Jean Woman.
Thank you very much.
Your Jean sister, right?
Congratulations.
I mean, Julie's sister.
Sorry, none of my kids got any of you in middle and high schools.
Thank you.
I was going to give you a better hug.
Thank you.
Here, take this, take this.
Thank you.
Big time.
I know. My oldest is going into fourth, though. Couple, couple of years away still.
West Coast, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. We got to get a group shot with everybody.
The other thing I wanted to add, John. No, I- John, I just wanted to add the one-
No problem.
One thing that-
Congratulations.
Thank you. All the teachers are great. Everybody, I think they've contributed to make this just a wonderful school system. But one thing that I loved about one of the stories tonight is how Joanne Coughlin transformed herself. And, you know, you read a lot about, oh, those older teachers, they don't want to know anything about technology. Not saying you're old, I said older teachers, hear what I said. And the way, the way Joanne embraced technology and became a leader in this district in the implementation of technology, I just found that a fascinating story. Not that everybody's story isn't fascinating, but I just thought the way Joanne kind of took the lead on that, she was one of our first technology people, if I recall correctly.
She absolutely is, absolutely.
So, yeah, just wanted to mention that. Nice. So how do we want to take this?
I have my phone number now.
If you want to, do you want to, I think the committee might like to have a picture right here.
Right.
Does this work for you? Okay.
How are we going to get us all in? Big group. Should the committee be in the back? Committee, maybe you guys can step up.
I'll be on the side so you won't see me in the back.
Oh, no, did you see?
No, I was-
Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy your retirement.
Stay busy.
When you were like, I graduated in 2079.
It's always tricky when you're taking 85 years, people are taking-
Yeah, this is the only way to look.
And some pictures we had around the graduation. 38 this week?
What day is your birthday? Tell me a few years.
Right, exactly.
How old are you?
Just turned 39 last week.
Robyn, you better be here.
At least one more day.
If you want to check out the books, ladies, they're over here. Okay. Jerry was here, he asked them why they're not staying for the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you tomorrow.
Did you have one more day? Yeah, Eric, don't forget, set that alarm one more time.
One more time.
We see each other just about every morning on Main Street, so.
Yeah.
One more, one more time.
And if they've done 105, 100.5 years together, I think-
If I did the math right, yeah, it was 100.5.
Okay, so to figure, to finish up with our guests, you want to, let's go in the order of the new business and maybe perhaps Dr. O'Connell. Are you going to present about the new club proposal, the North Reading Middle School Gay-Straight Alliance?
Yes. Okay. Hi. So I would like to ask your consideration for a new club at the middle school. It came as a proposal to me from two teachers, Lacy Lahey, an eighth grade foreign language teacher, and Terry House, a seventh grade English language arts teacher, to form a gay-straight-alliance club at the middle school. There has been one in longstanding at the high school, and they would like to see one at the middle school. Just as a point for your consideration, I think many of you know I was a prior administrator in Reading at a middle school, and we did have a gay-straight-alliance club at Parker Middle School when I was there back as early as 2010. So I do believe this is something that middle schools do offer, and I would certainly take any questions, but would like your consideration for starting this club in the fall.
I have a question.
Sure.
I understand that there's some of the middle school students that currently take part in a club or other activities associated at the high school. Has any sixth grader shown interest in this type of club versus seventh or eighth?
I was not aware that seventh or eighth grade students, Mr. LePret, are participating in the gay-straight-alliance at the high school.
I'm not sure if it's the alliance or activities or something of that nature that they, not at all?
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not-
Yeah.
Say don't. Okay, I just heard that from some of the students.
Yeah, I'm- Most of our clubs, if not all of our clubs, are very separate.
Okay.
For developmental reasons.
I think the one thing, do we, do we do any interchange in the, what's the community, the interact?
Interact.
Do the, does the middle school interact with the high school interact at all?
No, ours is called Early Act.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that might be where there was some interaction.
No.
But I know that our club, that club was based on-
Right.
The interact club, the Early Act club at the middle school.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think in a vacuum, there might be questions from some people in the public, but I thought you did a really good job in going over the potential offerings and exactly what the club would be getting into. And I found that really useful just because, again, I mean, I think anything concerning sexuality could potentially be, you know, questionable by some people, but I think it was really good going through the potential offerings about, you know, very concrete what we're going to be doing with the, with the club, and so I support it.
And I think the, the questions are more so around the, the entry age of sixth grade versus seventh and eighth, I think, absolutely valid. I think it's more the sixth graders, you know, maybe going through the year of sexual education first and understanding that first was the only thing that I think might surface, you know, let kids be kids as long as they can be kids.
Right.
So that's the only thing that arises for me, is more that, you know, 12-year-old age versus seventh and eighth.
Historically, the only club at the middle school that we limited in terms of grade level was Peer Leaders, and it had only been, at one point, for eighth graders only, and then we said, well, we'll let seventh grade, and now we let sixth and seventh and eighth grade, but I'm open to, you know, the recommendations of the committee for the grade levels.
That's why I'd have any sixth grade students in particular, because if there was a need for a sixth grade student, I'd say absolutely, you'd want that person to have that support.
It seems to me this is, it'll be a self-selecting group that, that wants to participate, and it may certainly be true that more seventh and eighth graders are, feel ready to participate in that kind of activity, but I think if a sixth grader does feel that strongly and is ready to make that commitment, I, I certainly wouldn't think they shouldn't.
Those sixth graders that don't understand sexuality and those things yet, it will bring a lot of questions home to parents. So, that's the only thing. But I believe when I looked at Linfield, their seventh and eighth grade participate, but it's different because they have a fifth grade, I believe, in their middle school.
At the middle school, yeah.
So that makes a little bit more sense. So I totally understand not limiting it, that's the only thing that I'm speaking, you know, on behalf of just what I think may surface.
I appreciate that.
Has there been any movement from the students for this?
Not this year. There was last year, not this year. That was a question that I did ask Ms. Lahey and Ms. House, have students come to you this year to ask you for this? And they said that they had not, but the, the year prior, there was a group of students who did. And I would like to think that, at its core, the group would be focused on acceptance and diversity and welcoming, and our mantra always is kindness, and so I would, I realize there's the sexual component, but I would like the emphasis to be more on welcoming and acceptance.
This seems to me to be well in line with the whole development of social-emotional learning also in the school. So, it's something I would certainly support.
Any other comments or questions? If none, can I have a vote to approve this club?
I will make a motion to approve the North Reading Middle School Gay-Straight Alliance.
Second?
One, one question. What's, what's the, John, what is the stipend for the first two years?
So it'll be new, under the new contract, and I believe it's $750 for-
Okay, I thought it was 700, is it 50? Is it seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a two-year pilot.
Correct.
A two-year pilot process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then moving on to the improvement plans, are the middle or middle school going to go first?
If that's okay with the committee, with the chairman?
That is great.
So just to acknowledge the members this year, the two teacher representatives, actually, one of them was just here, I should have acknowledged her. Jean Walsh is a reading teacher, she was here supporting Helena Meyer, one of her colleagues. Jean Walsh and Carla Lister were the two teacher representatives. Amy Luckowitz, a familiar name to the, to the group, it was the community representative, this is her second year in that role. And the two parent representatives were Sandy Garnis, a current, a parent of a current seventh grader, soon-to-be eighth grader, and Heather McLeod, a parent of a current sixth grader, soon-to-be seventh grader. And they were very helpful over the course of the year in the development of this new plan and the implementation of the previous year's plan. So I like to just highlight a few things from this past year, based on the school improvement plan from the year prior. We implemented year three of the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. That's an intervention program that we focused on math, reading, science, executive functioning, and study skills. So once a week, students were placed into these interventions for nine or 10 sessions, and then we reassessed and determined where, where, if any, place that they still needed intervention. So again, this is the third year that we've been doing this, we've seen success. Mel, if you recall, last year you asked for consideration of extending for students who are already, you know, at grade level or beyond grade level. So we did this year pilot in science, a, an intervention session for students who were performing above grade level, to really try to challenge them and expose them to standards that weren't covered in the regular science classroom. We also conducted and continue to use the iReady diagnostic test for math and reading. I'm sure the committee is aware that's an adaptive online test that is very accurate in determining, determining children's math and reading levels. They'll give you an actual grade level, broken down into very specific domains and standards that the students would benefit from further review on. Additionally, we implemented year two of a positive behavior intervention and support framework. And really what that's all about is, is telling kids upfront what you want them to do, what you expect them to do in terms of behavior, and then rewarding them for showing exemplary behavior. We implemented as part of the PBIS framework, monthly care days, and those are social-emotional learning days that we, a group of teachers and students from the Peer Leaders Group plan to really focus and dial in on social-emotional learning. And we included for the second year in a row, a mindfulness component into that, just a basic relaxation, stress reduction mindfulness for all the students. We actually also had this year drop-in mindfulness sessions for staff on Thursday mornings, and they were very well received. There were a few times during MCAS when I actually wasn't able to facilitate the drop-in sessions, and teachers actually did it on their own, which, which was great. And then I kind of just put together in the fourth bullet some of the big highlights from the student activities. Once on This Island was our musical this year, it was amazing. We just found out that two of our students won awards from the group that, middle school group that gives away the drama awards. We had our winter and spring concerts. Sad to see Mr. Foreman at his last concert earlier in this month. Our March Madness basketball tournament, we do that with the students play each other and, and compete during the time of the collegiate March Madness tournament, and then whoever wins that tournament plays the faculty. So just a few weeks ago, it was really fun. We had a faculty versus student basketball game, and for the first time in several years, the seventh graders beat us. I have a big bruise on my knee, but I did score a point, so that's good, but the seventh grade students beat us, but it was really fun. We also have an old-school geography bee. Our students actually presented to the school committee back in March, whenever our presentation was, actually, I think it was May, geography bee that we had back in January, and a history bee. Students actually, for the history bee, traveled down to, I think, Atlanta to compete nationally in the history bee. We just finished our Washington DC trip. Over 162 students attended that trip, they had a great time, it was wonderful weather, not too hot, and everyone came back just really enjoying the opportunity to visit, visit our nation's capital. Field Day and Legacy Day were just this past week. Legacy Day is our version of a graduation for the eighth grade students. It's really a day focused on their time at the middle school and talking to them about their legacy and what they will be leaving behind. We also had Science Olympiad this year, run by Mrs. Wall, a science teacher, and we came in 10th out of, I think, 30 middle schools who participated, so that, we did a great job. That's a really rigorous science competition that students plan for over the course of many, many, many months. And then Project 351 was also presented to you last month with Tyler Craig acting as our student ambassador to the, for the group of eighth grade students who went to, to, into Boston for the day for a leadership conference. Additionally, we had a book study group, we read Mindful Teacher, Mindful School, and that was actually, it was facilitated by myself, but all five schools participated. There was representation from all five schools. We met monthly, read the book, and practiced mindfulness as a group. And then one of the things I really am super proud of is the one-to-one Chromebook pilot in the seventh grade this year that I think was absolutely a success. This was the first year that students took the devices home. We issued them in August, and they, they, starting on the first day of school, they brought them to school, brought them home, used them during the day in school, used them at home for homework. Really, I, it was tremendous, and I owe a lot to the tech department, Joanne Coughlin being here earlier, but Dan Downs, the director of digital learning, did a great job helping to support the teachers and helping to support administration in this initiative. And I think what's most important to just remember about the initiative is that it wasn't about just replacing, using a Chromebook to replace pen and paper. It wasn't about, you know, just word processing. It was about really shifting the way that teachers are instructing and to use technology and integrate technology in a meaningful way. And I think just 100%, it was successful, and we are lucky enough to have the support from the town and the support from the district to, again, give out Chromebooks to the new seventh graders starting in August to use at the first day of school. So these are just highlights from this past year, and then into the goals that I'm proposing. I base the goals on NRPS 2021, the, the big headings, the big umbrella titles, so Teaching and Learning being the first one. A lot of focus still on our MCAS scores, as the committee knows that we are working hard to bring those scores up. So the first proposal is to increase the student growth, growth percentile in ELA in two of the three grades, based on the spring data that I hope to have in early July. I hope to have access to that data to begin looking at it and, and conducting analysis. Same thing with goal number two, but that's focused on eighth grade. The reason that we do not use student growth percentile is they don't issue that for science because they only take, they take science in fifth grade and then again in eighth grade. So we just obviously want to keep the improvement, focus on improvement, so we would want to see the aggregate improve from the 2018 results, which, again, I hope to have very soon. And continuing to math. So ELA, math, and science would be our big focus from, for the standardized testing perspective. And then the fourth goal under the Teaching and Learning umbrella is to improve the climate levels at the middle school, as reported by students and staff. So for the past two years, we've collected data from students and staff in June, just about overall how they, how they feel about the middle school, what their experience is in terms of physical safety, emotional safety, feeling as, as though they are supported. And we gave a similar survey just recently, so I haven't yet analyzed those results, but we're going to, you know, keep looking to improve the way that students and staff feel about being at the school and how they overall rate their experience. I think that's super important, and as I've shared on numerous occasions, there are, there's a lot of research that suggests when students- when students feel good about being here and feel supported, and just as importantly, when staff feels good about being here and supported every day, learning is going to increase, as is attendance, behavior, et cetera. So that's a really important goal to me personally, that we will continue to try to improve. And then the technology integration, I think I've already touched on that a little bit in the first goal, that we will, we will follow to the best of our ability, the district's plan, the district's technology plan to make technology integral to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. I think the committee knows that this year, the middle school took all of their MCAS using Chromebooks. It was, you know, mandated by the state that seventh and eighth grade do that. We decided to go ahead and have sixth grade do it as well, and that in fact, in 2019, all grades will need to, at the middle school, be using the Chromebook, so we wanted to get ahead of it a little bit. But again, just one more time, a shout-out to the digital learning team. They really have been super supportive to the middle school staff and administration in implementing the technology plan. Goal number two, I'm very excited about. I'm going to be working very closely with Assistant Superintendent Daley and an outside consultant, who's an expert with Google Studios. I'm not super familiar with Google Studio, but it's a Google platform for data, for data management. And right now, if I want to look at a student's profile and I want to look at their grades, their MCAS, their attendance, their behavior, I have to go to many different databases. And what Google Studio will do is hopefully pull all of that information from the, from the outside places and put it into one place. And then we can, you know, update it live and look at it live and really make better informed, data-driven decisions. So we're meeting in early July with that outside consultant and Dr. Daley to, to begin talking about how the middle school might be able to pilot using that tool. So I'm, I'm super excited about that goal. And then the last area are our student support services. And again, as I mentioned in the highlights, we will continue to implement the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. Again, that, that's a, a, a group of intervention sessions that are designed to help students who are performing below grade, below grade level. But again, this year, we did try to pilot for students who are performing above grade level. What can we do for them to really push them and challenge them? And then goal number two is something that we began to talk about this year, but I would like to talk about more next year with the school council and my faculty. You probably don't know this, because this is the inner daily workings of the middle school, but currently and for the past many years since I've been here, and I'm completing my seventh year, our middle school, each grade level has its own schedule. So say, for example, at the high school, they operate on the green gold schedule, the 78-minute blocks, and everybody's on the same timeframe. Not at the middle school. There's, there's three different schedules. And the reason for that in part is because eighth grade has five core academic subjects, because they begin to take full-time foreign language. Sixth and seventh grade do not have that fifth subject, so by default, their academic blocks are longer because we're dividing by four and not five. And so we're just trying to think creatively, talk to other schools, just see what, what can be done to maybe improve our, our daily operational schedule so that it's not quite, so, just, I guess, difficult to follow in terms of trying to share staff, trying to, you know, provide services to students. It's challenging when all three grades are operating in a different schedule, operating on a different schedule. And then the last goal, something that we've worked really hard on in the last few years, is to build in-district programming at the middle school to meet the needs of all of our students. So this will be coming up in September, the third year of the RISE program that we, you know, have put together and, and built with a BCBA to provide supports to our students who require that type of program. We also have several other substantially separate programs at the middle school, and we're working closely with Cynthia Conant, the Director of Pupil Services, and Maureen Ryan, the Secondary Coordinator of, of Pupil Personnel Services, to really look at those programs. We hope to have, and I think I included it in my plan, to have a consultant come out and evaluate our programs. It's very healthy and, and helpful to periodically have an evaluation of any of your programs that you're running. And having an outside person do that is, is helpful in terms of them being neutral and knowing best practices in, in the area for these types of programs. So we're going to continue to look at our programs and, and tweak them and adjust them, but the focus is always meeting the needs of the students who are, who are entering our school. Spent a lot of time already this year ensuring that the grade five to six transition is, is as seamless as possible, especially for students who have individual education plans or 504 plans. I think that's it for the middle school. So that's all, obviously, in the school, the school improvement plan that I believe you have. I'm not sure if there are any questions.
Thank you.
I tried to be brief.
Questions, comments?
Kathy, can you give an example, talking about student support services, goal number two, talking about the schedule? The schedule, we've seen, we've done a lot of work on that.
I know.
What are some of the negative impacts that you see of the schedule as it currently exists?
Well, I know that this isn't student-centered, but one of the, the most challenging areas is staffing, right? So if, if I want to share staff or I have a, you know, a really good speech and language pathologist, which I happen to have, she's outstanding, it's very difficult for her to service all three grades when they're operating at different times. And she would be more efficient and able to service more students if everybody was on the same schedule. That doesn't sound student-centered, but indirectly, it affects students. So that's, that's one example. Being able to share other support staff, like paraprofessionals. So right now, if someone had, you know, an opportunity to help out in the eighth grade, they have, and they work in the sixth grade, they would have to look at their schedule to see when the eighth grade block is that needs, you know, support, and see when their sixth grade block ends, because they're all within five or 10 minutes of each other, starting and ending throughout the course of the day.
So it's almost like running three different schools in some sense.
It, it is, yeah.
Three different groups of professionals serving the school.
Right.
Because there's just, it's harder to do cross.
It is.
For the faculty to do across a different group.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and I think in addition to that, I think that was one of the, one of the things that I, I noticed, but you have the youngest grades having the longest classes as well. By having it divided by four, and so you have a sixth grader going in, and they have very long classes.
They do, they're about an hour.
Yeah, I mean, I can't keep my attention for an hour in most, most situations. So, I mean, I would, I would encourage you to do that, and I imagine there's probably smarter people than me that can figure out how to do that.
Yeah, well, the school council has told me that they're, you know, they will support me next year and really looking at other schools in the area that have different schedules. It's just, just looking at what might work. But really, at the end of the day, it's going to come down to finding a fifth class for the sixth and seventh grade and what we can do with them during that time so that it's meaningful and, and, you know, academic.
I mean, I wonder if you could even rotate some of the classes and have, you know, two sections, one week of some class as opposed to...
Right, we talked, we talked about that. Foreign language has been something that we've talked about since I've been here as a fifth class in the seventh grade, but it just hasn't happened yet, maybe someday.
And then my only other question was just, we've heard from digital learning a little bit about the one-to-one, but from your perspective, I mean, how, how's the one-to-one going? And are there any issues? I mean, are the, technologically, I mean, are the, are the Chromebooks holding up well? I mean, are the, have the students really, have they become second nature to them?
Yeah, the students have been fantastic. So having been a middle school administrator for 10 years, I was worried about, you know, 12-year-olds bringing this device back and forth and charging it faithfully every night, but we held firm to, I know this may sound cruel, but we weren't going to just loan them out every day to kids who forgot them, because we wanted the expectation to be, you need to bring it, and you need to bring it charged. And the kids did a fantastic job, and I would say, in large part, to their parents, helping them and reminding them. And, you know, this is like a textbook or a binder. So we really had zero problems with kids, bringing them to school fully charged. There were a few minor, and the tech department could tell you, but a very small percentage of actual technical problems. But we were able to have loner devices on hand, so if a child's Chromebook stopped working and needed to be sent out, we, they would get a loner, and within a week or so, you know, hopefully it would be fixed and, and returned. So those, those kind of operational problems were nonexistent. And, and like I said, I was really wanting to see that shift in the, in the way that the teachers were thinking about using technology. And I think that that, they've really embraced that and done a really nice job.
And were the, with the MCAS testing, with all three grades doing it, were there, were there any technical issues that came from that?
A few minor, yeah, a few minor technical issues. And I should absolutely give a shout-out to my assistant principal, Mike Maloney, because he took a real lead on helping with, you know, co-facilitating with the tech department, the implementation of the online MCAS.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, I think, the one thing I just, I, I always want to applaud you for is I think you are very good as an administrator of seeing the kid as a whole student, not just looking at the academics, not just looking at the test scores, but, you know, I think you've been a leader in this, in North Reading about trying to think about, you know, social emotional issues and I just think...
That's what my dissertation was on.
I think there's a question in the audience, too.
Just a question as far as, did you experience any difficulties with Wi-Fi at home?
A few parents, but I would say, you know, a handful of parents, you know, talked to us at the beginning of the year about, more about filters and things that they wanted to be able to provide above and beyond what the school was already providing, but not from a socioeconomic perspective where parents said, you know, we...
We don't have Wi-Fi.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
If there's nothing else, perhaps we can do a motion to accept the middle school...
Actually, before we, before we do, I just want to have one more quick comment. Members of the committee will come to know, if they don't already, that I'm particularly fond of, of school councils, having served on three of them here. And I, I, I just want to use this opportunity as a way to acknowledge especially the, the teachers and the parents and the stu, and the community representatives who participate in these councils. It's really fun, interesting work, and Kathy and AJ and, and I was on the bachelor councils as well. They all use them in different ways, above and beyond the present, the preparation of the school improvement plan. And, and I just, you know, I think they're really important, and I want to make that comment, so.
Excellent. Okay. Having that, can we have a motion to accept the middle school improvement plan?
Sure.
I will make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Dr. O'Connell.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. LePrat.
Okay, very good, thank you. So we, at the high school, have a, have a larger group. And here is, here are the names of the representatives, excuse me, on the high school, school council. Student reps, teacher reps, community representative as well, and Michael Walborn. Again, Mr. McGowan served on our school council this year. Very nice to have him and his contributions. So moving into the highlights from the current school year, the 1718 school year. I'll try to give these, I think they're, they're due attention, but there are a number of them. So obviously, the curriculum, ongoing curriculum work with a focus on common assessment strategies across all departments, that work continues. We have our Parents Association, very committed group. We were able to have a number of speakers come in. Ed Garrity, who speaks to our freshman class early on in the year, Cara Filler, who did a, a wonderful presentation on decision-making. And then Kevin Lau, you might recall, presented in the gymnasium and talked about overcoming obstacles and embracing, really, the difficulties that define who you are. Everybody, everyone's got some, and it's how you approach the things that might be challenging you that really define you. And he gave a tremendous presentation. We continue with our freshman advisory program and, you know, the, the, the wonderful relationship that exists between our SLAM mentors, our junior and senior SLAM mentors, and their mentees as incoming freshmen, helping to really focus on that transition, making sure it's a smooth one for freshman students. It's nice to see that happen every year, when you think of the, about the students that, that participate in SLAM and, you know, their commitment to that organization. And certainly, it starts with the advisors that, that lead that group, but the kids really make it something personal for themselves and obviously focused on the mentor. The commitment is tremendous. We're continuing with our Stress Less Group, again, with stress reduction and mindfulness. That, that group did incorporate some new strategies this year, so that's nice to see. The Change Team is in its third year this year, and that's a, a tech, kind of a tech support group. We had two international travel opportunities. Students went to China and Quebec. Moving on, this is a nice, a real nice feather in the cap. The fourth straight Highland Trophy just announced the other day, and this is from the Cape Ann League. So a, the recognition of the kind of confluence of win-loss percentage against Cape Ann rivals, academic GPA scores, and recognition for sportsmanship. And this is the fourth straight year that North Reading High School has been awarded the Highland Trophy. Something that I think, I'm, I'm very proud of. I know our athletic department's very proud of. I think beyond the athletic department, the academic teachers, as GPA as a component. And that was, we just had a nice photo opportunity today. Other athletic accomplishments, a Division III championship for our female track team. And keeping in mind, of course, that they won it in Division Four last year, so were challenged to move up a division and said, okay, we'll show you, we'll just win it again at Division Three. So gotta love that spirit. Division Two North champs in varsity softball, a great run by that team, 23-1 final record. Their only loss coming in the, the Eastern Mass semifinal. Two great in New Bedford that went on to win it. Kind of shifting away from, from athletics and moving back to academics, and I'm, I'm going to kind of frame this a little bit. So our Advanced Placement Program remains strong. So if you think about around 800 kids and times eight classes, so how many sections that is? 13% of every student sitting in a class is taking an academic, I'm sorry, an advanced placement class. And that is a number that has stayed strong, I think regardless of cohort, which is something that I think is indicative of, again, the willingness of our students to embrace a rigorous academic course load. That, that number, you know, while it could fluctuate, and I don't want to challenge myself this year, really is, is a tremendous statistic that consistently, students wanting to challenge themselves and take a rigorous course load. And that is, of course, with open enrollment, so there's no restrictions other than course prereqs that would prevent a student from taking an, an advanced placement class. We had a, a new club this year, the Students for Soldiers Club, that was a year-one pilot. Our student council, another tremendous year, gold-rated Book of Excellence. And you may recall that the superintendent was awarded a special award by the Mass State of Student Councils. We had the SEAL of Bilinguality Initiative, and we'll hear more about that in a couple of minutes. We had six students awarded by the Writing Club, a forty, over 4, 4,500 entries in the Commonwealth, and their stories were publicized, or public, blah. They were published in the Spine Chillers Tales from the Bay State. So another nice recognition for those students. And again, our Maskers in our notorious group, just consistently performing at such a high level. When they make the trip into Boston, and you're kind of there on, on Stewart Street into the, that Hancock Theater, it's, it is tremendous to see them kind of consistently perform at such a, such a high level. In, in the, the competition is very, very strong in, in the, in the arts in those areas, so it's just a tremendous group. These are, again, some of the highlights from the past year. Looking ahead to 1819, wonderfully, wonderful good news that we are adding another school psychologist to our student... to our student support area. Been a huge benefit to counseling, testing, and other student wellness areas. We continue to look at potential candidates and hire candidates for special ed positions that have dual certification, not only in special ed, but in a core subject area. Looking at a new course on, in 1819, Robotics Academy II. We are continuing with our Common Application Bootcamp. That is already getting enrollees for the August 14 and 16 seminar. Our Bridge Program continues next, coming up in 1819. It'll be in its third year. We are still working with the Bright organization. And if you may recall, the Bridge Program is that kind of temporary transitional program to help students transition back into the classroom if they've had extended absences for any number of reasons. That program remains strong, and we're looking to add a little bit more support to that. It is, it is really vital when we look at how it impacts students and their ability to succeed in the classroom, getting back in a very difficult, or coming back from a very difficult transition. And, you know, an initiative that I think I really enjoy hearing from students that have participated in the internship program and the value that they get out of that. As much as we focus on the educational experience in the school and as much as we value that, there is really this, this other piece of it when we can get a student and an opportunity to get in the industry or to get in the workplace directly and have that, that experience that we can't provide in the insulated walls that we love so much of North Reading High School. And the tremendous value that students are able to gain from the internship program. So, already there's some increased enrollment from last year's numbers with that. If I could move along and just focus on the goals for 1819. Now, again, this is the, these are the goals that are in your current FY19, FY20, 20 document. So, our goal of continuing to advocate for staffing that helps support an effective student-teacher ratio. Our goal of enhancing the educational program for students in curriculum instruction and assessment with a particular emphasis on providing students the skills they need to meet the challenges of today's global community. Our goals with respect to NRPS 2021 and that document, how that document certainly helps drive the initiatives of the high school. Goal number four, providing an extracurricular program to students that contributes to their well-roundedness as individuals. We have a little bit of evidence of that with an additional club. And we'll talk more about another component of that with, with an athletic focus in a few minutes. Not to mention another reference to the Seal of Bilinguality, which again, I think is related to that goal number four. Goal five, expanding the use of technology as a teaching and learning tool. We're going to have an increased opportunity for students at grade nine with devices in the classroom. So, that's a, that's a nice experience that we're starting to increase, more so than we have already presently. Goal six has to do with meeting the standards that are defined in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges with our step in that 10-year process. We are at the five-year progress report. That is due in March of 19. So, the members of our school improvement team have heard me talk about, you know, our initiatives in making sure that that five-year progress report is exactly where it needs to be. And again, that's in the March, in March of 2019. Obviously, working collaboratively with the middle school and making sure that in these shared spaces and as we share the building, that there's equity and there's communication. And I want to thank Ms. O'Connell for our continued positive relationship. I can imagine that there are situations where you've got students from different grades beyond, you know, middle, high school grades where you don't necessarily take the relationship for granted. Sometimes where I feel like when I come in and I, and I see Ms. O'Connell, I think, oh yes, oh my gosh, somebody who really is committed to their program, but also the element of cooperation that really makes, makes the building work. And if we can focus again on goal eight, meeting the provisions of transitioning framework, curriculum with, using the Mass frameworks as a guide, changes in English and math, and now the curriculum work with the new science and technology engineering curriculum. So, that work will be continuing. And as we look at goal nine, continuing to utilize the ed evaluation model to perform teacher evaluation, enhancing teaching and learning. Again, this, the benefit of that model, I think, is tremendous. It allows for such a meaningful conversation between teachers and administrators. And there's been a really strong push for teachers to work more collaboratively with each other as a, as a component of that goal, as there are team goals that I think really help tie the school together and help create an atmosphere where the teachers are not only just working with colleagues, but invested with the work that they're doing as opposed to just sharing a space or sharing, being fellow department members, but engaged in team goals. So, I know I went kind of fast, but I'm hoping I didn't make anything, you know, less, less comprehensive or less understandable for you. Questions?
I think the only question I have, so, so next year will be the first year of the one-to-one for at the high school?
So, the one-to-one model next year is devices in, devices in the classroom for the freshman students with, with the in-class device, not necessarily the take-home device.
Okay, so it's a-
Can I add to that?
Okay.
So, each year, we advance one year with a pilot. So, next year, the ninth grade is the so-called pilot year. So, those teachers and students work with them in the classroom. It's the eighth grade now that will have them.
Yep.
And then, so we'll advance one year. That's the plan right now. There's the possibility that that plan may advance if the funding were to come. And we've kind of targeted like the end of the first marking period, maybe the second marking period if the state budget were to support an initiative like that. But right now, the plan is, as AJ said, to be-
In, in the classroom.
That'll be the pilot year for grade nine.
And with, within the class, now, this is my ignorance because I don't have a high schooler yet, but I imagine there's just, there's a lot of selection of what classes students can take. So, if it's not a take-home, will there be some classes that would have devices and certain sections that might not have it? Okay.
Our, our math program, as an example, has gone all online.
Okay.
Right.
And we-
So, varying degrees of, of, yes.
And the high school has a number of Chromebooks now.
And I assume the teachers have all been preparing for this and working with digital learning and-
The teachers, again, I think the teachers have, this is, their use of the device has been, you know, kind of ongoing for the last couple of years. And now, the, the availability of a device where they're not necessarily just signing it out for a block or I'm going to use it tomorrow, but to have it right there, I think, yeah. They're, they are, I think, very comfortable with the devices. Absolutely.
Other questions? Mrs. Kopke?
So, I'm just wondering the availability of Chromebooks for the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Like, are we consolidating the current Chromebooks that the high school has?
No.
For the ninth-
We are adding in additional Chromebooks for the grade nine students.
Okay.
In those classroom settings. Not, not tapping to our current resources of the other grades. But it's a good question.
With the internship program?
Yes.
Roughly, what eight percent increase are you looking at for this coming year? You said there was going to be some increased enrollment.
Right, so right now, we had, I would say it's probably like a three percent increase, four percent increase.
And do they have to meet certain criteria?
Yes, yes. So, they, they have done some research. They've, they've provided a resume documentation, their interest in the field. And they've, you know, with some support, made some contacts with respect to businesses that would entertain their internship.
So, they have to do sort of the outreach to the businesses?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have any, is there any availability of just seeing what companies are involved in the internship?
There, there is a spreadsheet, a database. And the guidance department works to build that database. The assistant principal works to, so there's a, there's a shared database that is constantly being kind of reviewed and added to, edited.
Do we, do, do you, does the school communicate with the companies directly at all, or is it all through the student?
Oh, no, we'll, we will, we will, we will speak with the companies, yes.
Is there a way to share that, just a list of companies with us? Or I'm just curious, what, what companies, what kinds of companies are involved?
Well, I was, it really runs the gamut.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, that, that database with, you know, if I talk to our guidance department, I can say, hey, listen, how do we, you know, can we get a little more, a little more PR for this, for this, this program? Absolutely. We could do that.
It'd be annoying, it's, yeah.
I can get a copy for you.
Yeah.
One more question, so, mister, I was, one question I came in going to ask was-
Sure.
Why there was nobody from the community on the council? But it sounds like Michael Walburn is a member of the community.
I can go back to our, yep.
Just because he signed it as a parent, that's why it's my question.
Oh, you know what, I, that was a typo on my, it's my mistake. He is our community rep down here in the corner.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Mrs. Kopke?
I think that's a-
I have just another question about how the internship works. Is there someone who kind of oversees the program and, you know?
The assistant principal, Mike Downs.
Meets with, you know, the employees.
Students turn in a log. They, they have a responsibility to document kind of their experiences and that, you know, that kind of-
Like, the students have to write up a paper or something?
They maintain their log, yes. They maintain their log and again, have certain, a certain number of criteria that they follow through.
And then, as far as grading goes, who assigns?
The assistant principal oversees the, those students on the internship, reviews the, the log and the journal entries and things like that, and assigns a grade that way.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
I do.
It is a lot.
If I remember correctly, the internship is actually presented as an offer in the, in the student-
Yeah, it's, right, it's in the course, program studies.
Yep. We should add, it's, it's only available to seniors.
It, excuse me, yes.
Okay. Need further questions or comments? Okay, if there's none, may I have a motion to accept the high school improvement plan?
I so moved to accept the high school improvement plan.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. LaPrat.
Thank you.
You have to stay for a couple more things.
Yeah, I'm happy to, yeah. I'm just-
I'm going to move back up.
Transition us a little bit.
Okay, so, thank you. So, moving on, the, we have a presentation about the North Reading High School Seal of Bilinguality Program. Mr. LaPrat?
Thank you. Be with you, and we're just queuing up here. Yep. Yeah, right behind you. Yeah, right here. Thank you. So, what Mr. Bernard is handing out now is a copy of the PowerPoint that we're going to look at, the Seal of Bilinguality Initiative, and a brief explanation and background there on, on that second slide. So, this is an award that's given to graduating seniors who have attained complete proficiency in English and a partner language. And what this proficiency includes is complete fluency in all four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, when applicable, of both languages, and that kind of when applicable will, would be language-specific. There are certain languages that, for example, sign language, American Sign Language, right? You're not necessarily listening, but you're, you're able to demonstrate fluency in, in the other areas. As it says, their program is designed to both motivate and recognize students. We have pursued and attained bilingualism during their academic career, and this is part of a national initiative signed into law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in this past fall, November of 17. So, again, the Seal of Bilinguality Initiative is looking to promote this type of award and recognition at North Reading High School. Earning the Seal of Bilinguality, all students that attend the school are able to apply. Students are also obliged to provide the community of North Reading no less than five hours of linguistic services as needed. That is a part of the, earning the Seal of Bilinguality, that during your time at North Reading High School, you may be called upon to provide some community service as an interpreter or other service with respect to that, that language. Awards and recognition will be given to graduating seniors at the, excuse me, at the annual spring student recognition night and at graduation. And what that, and it's also reflected on the student's transcript. So, they'll be denoted in the graduation program that they have earned the Seal of Bilinguality and have a pin. The steps to implementation for this initiative, continued research of the Seal of Bilinguality Program, information gathering that's, that's gone, that's been ongoing, working with other regional school districts with other advocacy groups around it. We've already piloted the stamp test in three languages, Spanish, French, and Arabic. So, the students have got a kind of a, a little bit of an experience there. The Seal of Bilinguality Committee currently has members from a number of stakeholding groups, teachers, parents, students, and administrators. And a plan for implementation has been developed. And that's what's on the next slide there. You can see kind of identifying and defining what are the criteria? What is the award and recognition? What does that look like? What are our costs or budget factors? What are the leadership responsibilities? And how does the test itself work? These are a number of, a number of the topics that the committee has undertaken and has researched and has presented a plan for. The Seal of Bilinguality, whoop, until this shuts off on the screen, okay. A number of contributors to the, to this initiative are listed here on this slide, also in your packet. And as you can see, it's, it's a really energized group with a number of very committed participants. Something that I hope that the school committee would endorse and allow us to continue to pursue, to make this something that North Reading High School offers as part of its foreign language programming.
Thank you.
And questions?
Questions? Mr. Webster? McGowan?
Yeah, it's very exciting. It really is. It's nice to see that-
So, I, I have a few questions, and then I see Mrs. Kopke with some questions. So, with the fluency, so there's no, there's no requirement that they actually have even taken a foreign language? So, if somebody comes bilingual, they can-
That's true.
Get the recognition.
That is true.
Okay.
Yep, they would, they would pass, take the test and meet the, meet the criteria. They don't have to have taken a, they may already be bilingual.
Can you get more than one?
I think, I think the Seal of Bilinguality essentially means that you're, you've got more than, you've got more than one, yeah.
And then, when you were, do you have an idea about what year you think this would be? Like, for what graduating seniors?
Oh, we, I, we'd like to have it implemented so that the class of 19 would be, would be awarded the recognition. Absolutely.
And then, with the community service require, or- And then with the community service require, or requirement, I guess, has, has there been any outreach to the community about, you know, like where that need would be? Like what partnerships to be able to help them?
I think there's been some initial contacts and steps taken, um, for sure. But again, I, I don't think the committee's looking to go too far without the school committee's approval and, and, um-
Yeah, 'cause when you were, when you were explaining it, you said that if, if there is a need and if there is a requirement, I just wanna make sure that there's an opportunity for everybody to get five hours of-
Again, if, if, if I, if I'm say, if my, uh, second language is Arabic and there's just, it doesn't happen.
But would you still, would you still be able to get the seal then if you can't do five hours?
Yes, you would still be eligible, but-
It's stated as an obligation, but not as a requirement?
That's right. It's an obligation. I think that's, uh-
Obliged to.
Exactly how it's raised in the language.
Service effort, yeah.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kopke, you have a question?
So I just thought I'd kind of ask a question I was asking, that I was thinking about as far as the Arabic, you know, the students who are pursuing that avenue. We don't offer Arabic, so it could be whatever native language they, they come to North Reading with.
Right, and then they're making sure that, we're making sure that they're completely competent and fluent in English.
So the test, it looks like there's two testing sessions.
Yeah, that's proposed, the proposed two testing sessions.
An English test and then-
No, there would be a, there would be a, so for, uh, fluency in English, we would say that the completed English coursework would serve as that test.
Okay.
Fluency in the other language, now we'd be looking at the stamp test or, or some other approved testing mechanism. And the idea that we would have two test sessions is, if that's, if that's your second question, if I can answer that, is that in the fall, if we, if we have an opportunity to get some students tested, so they can put it into their, uh, college application packet, and then say, okay, you know, this is something you, uh, are looking to do, and why not make it a part of your, um, you know, your portfolio as a prospective college student? And then in the, in the spring, we would have one at the end of the year for the, you know-
I mean, I'm kind of likening this to like an AP kind of culmination of coursework, or like an achievement or essay two type. I mean, is that what this is similar to?
Uh, I think you could say that. I think that's, I think that's a reasonable conclusion.
But it's not supported by, excuse me, uh, it's not, it's not supported by, necessarily by classwork in, at North Reading High School.
Correct. It's, it may be, and it may not be.
It may have been, but it-
Right, it may be, but it may not be.
It's really that we're, if I'm understanding it correctly, that we're providing a mechanism and especially including a test that, uh, allows them to demonstrate that they are, uh, in fact-
At least bilingual.
That's exactly right. And then recognizing.
And recognizing that fact.
Sure.
And the only other question is on the indivi- sorry, the initiative contributors?
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit, is this a, a lot of community members? 'Cause I think I know some of the names. A lot of parents that are involved in this?
Yes.
Okay.
If I, I, if you don't mind-
Sure.
I could go back. So the curriculum coordinator for foreign languages for the district, Jamie San Arno, really is the one who took the lead on this, um, initially. And she was the one that did the outreach with the community, um, through, um, crafting an email that I ended up sending out back, mm, probably in maybe April, May. And from the, that period, there was a series of meetings held over maybe a six week, six to eight week timeframe that ultimately developed the report to submit to the principal, um, for his approval and then to bring it here. And we were actually very pleased with the number, I mean, it's not a huge group, but we were pleased with the number of people that, as parents, wanted to be involved and were pretty regular contributors at the meetings. And I think they saw this, um, many of them are, are not English native speakers themselves. And so I thought, I think they saw that this was a nice opportunity for something that was, they were passionate about to, to kind of, you know, bring to a school that, you know, doesn't necessarily have a lot of students that are non-English speaking or primary language speakers of English, so. And from that, it really, it, it, it took off, I think, rather quickly and brought us to the point tonight where, um, you know, it's something I touched upon back in the fall when I did my year two update. Mr. Buckley and, and Mr. Webster will remember or might recall that when I did my, um, annual update for NRPS 2021, it was something we were kind of exploring at that time. And it was nice to see that within a relatively short period of time, that we're at a place where we, we think we can do this for the class of 2019.
It's nice to recognize things for the fact that there's so many global organizations out there.
Exactly right.
And just bigger picture, the US is behind with, um, you know, people being able to speak multiple languages.
I think that's exactly the spirit, the spirit of the award.
I think you're absolutely right.
The, the right thing.
I agree.
Or where they're going.
And I think our, our international travel experiences for students over the last several years, I think, has done a lot to open up their, their, their world, so to speak, and, and really a view into, you know, what is out there beyond, you know, kind of the insulated world that they live in right now. And, and, and I think it's done a lot to kind of, you know, show that culturally, there's a lot to learn and how, how am I best able to, um, whether it's, you know, compete globally or enjoy, you know, other cultures, and it's through language. And so I think, I think that's been a bit of a hook in a good way for our students as well.
And it's a national initiative too.
Right.
It is.
It's much bigger than, you know, even the state.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. No further comments or questions?
One comment.
One more? You have a mic already.
Just a comment. Um, I think if the committee does endorse this, I think that should serve as a goal for increasing and improving our foreign language, you know, department at the high school and at the middle school. I think if we value this, then we should then value, you know, improving those, those programs at our high school.
We, we've had that goal for about fifteen years.
But-
And no money, and I expect that to continue. The goal without money.
But I think it's true though, and it'll be interesting to see what students are able to, who are interested in taking advantage and, and, and attain the designation. Uh, how many, uh, of those students will be students who have learned a foreign language through the North Reading-
Yeah.
-public schools as opposed to those who came here with a native language and have just become, or maybe already were proficient in English. Perhaps that will be a, uh, an interesting data point for the town to consider.
I would, I would agree, absolutely. Something certainly I'm interested in, in looking at, yeah.
And we, you know, I, I'm not so sure that how many people are aware, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, but we have had students in our district across all three grade levels that have come with ve- sometimes very little, um, understanding of the English language and have had to really immerse themselves fully. I mean, there have, there have been a number of cases going back over the last several years. I mean, they're not, it's not a huge number, but it might be, you know, for North Reading, I think it's enough of a number that we, you know, have to start to think about things a little bit differently. And I think that's a good thing in this case.
Yep. Yeah. I think my only other comment or concern would be that if, if this works, I think we eventually will have a, some people pushing for other languages as well, because there might be somebody that moves into the district that speaks Mandarin or speaks another language that's not on there. And, you know, just wanna make sure that, you know, again, I think we start with one thing, but eventually, if there are other languages that are supported, you're, you know, I, we would like to be able to recognize them on their diplomas as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions? I'll accept a motion to endorse the, uh, North Reading High School Seal of Bilinguality Program.
Yeah.
Motion to endorse the North Reading High School Seal of Bilinguality Program?
Just, I think we have to approve it, not endorse it.
You know, I, Mr. Buckley and I had spoken about that. I think either is fine. I mean, it's whatever you are most comfortable with. I, I think it's a, it's a-
Is, but it's endorsing-
It's a curricular initiative.
But is endorsing something really approving something?
I don't know that you need to, you're not obligated to approve. I know that's what your report says, but I don't think a, an emotion to approve hurts. It certainly doesn't limit us in any way, so if you're more comfortable with that, that's fine.
Yeah, we've spoken before about whether or not we need to endorse this to have it occur, or if we need to approve it.
I mean, you approve new courses, so that might be, that might be appropriate to approve as a course of study.
I both approve and endorse, so I could vote on either motion.
I approve and you endorse.
I couldn't vote on either motion.
That might be the better wording, is, is to approve.
Okay, so I'm gonna do, uh, a motion by Diana, second by Rich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on. Mr. LaPrat?
I think it's, yes, it's still me.
North Reading High School Cooperative Swim Team.
Right. Thank you. Uh, so I'm asking, uh, for your approval to continue the work with respect to, um, looking at taking our swim team as it currently exists and, um, ju- you know, I guess, uh, creating a relationship, a co-op relationship with Wilmington High School so that, um, our swim team would serve as a co-op, North Reading High School and Wilmington, uh, supporting both programs and, and sustaining both programs. Uh, this is, uh, a conversation that's been ongoing, certainly with both athletic departments. I know the Wilmington, uh, school committee has approved the venture. The Cape, uh, both the Cape Anne League, uh, and the Northeastern Conference have approved the venture. And presenting that to you tonight for your approval that the swim team, uh, move into a co-op relationship with Wilmington High School to support the, uh, the existence of those, of that program here and also make it sustainable for them as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions, concerns from the committee?
Just quickly, a little history of the swim team or, or what, over the last-
How did we get here type of thing?
So we currently, to be clear, we currently have, we support our own swim team.
We have our own swim team, that's right.
And what's, what are the numbers this year? What are the numbers we think going forward?
Uh, so we have had, the, 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 the numbers have been, um, specifically, I don't have that specific data, but I know the numbers have been, uh, sustainable. But we're, but we're, I think we're looking at the numbers potentially moving down a little bit. And then Wilmington reaching out to us and saying, um, you know, what about, uh, some kind of a co-op arrangement? I think, what do we have, twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I was gonna say twenty-five.
Twenty-five total?
Yeah.
And roughly how many Wilmington, um, students are interested?
I, I, somewhere between, I think, six and ten.
Yeah, this is, it's more driven by Wilmington's, what's perceived to be an inability to sustain a program on their own. We've been, we've, we've benefited from a co-op in the reverse.
For sure.
We have small numbers and such, so.
And would, would this in any way kick North Reading students off? Could the, our team support the combined numbers of both?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be pursuing it, yeah.
And just one budgetary note on this. So we, we would receive an additional, you know, user fee from the Wilmington students that would participate. And we do have, our rental rates are going up for the Burbank YMCA swimming there. We have a, we're on a, involved in a transition plan over the next three years. Those rates, quite honestly, are gonna go from about four thousand, five hundred dollars to close to twelve thousand dollars over the next, you know, three years. Every community-
What was it, what's it now?
Four thousand, five hundred.
To twelve thousand?
Yes. We're, next year, we're gonna be six thousand, five hundred, and then we're closer to nine, and then eventually, we're, we're up close to twelve. Uh, Reading is also experiencing the same thing. They're, they're phasing, they're phasing an, an increase in, uh, because of their costs. So it would help, you know, deter some of that additional cost.
Have we, have we had discussions with Wilmington about what their, their participants would pay versus ours? Would it be evenly divided and then?
They'd pay four hundred dollars.
It's the same fee.
They'll pay the, the same fee as in North-
But, but with four hundred dollars, that's what-
They'll pay four hundred dollars.
But wait, but with four hundred dollars, that's what we would do, but the school committee, the, the school budget might have to support if it's more than four hundred dollars. Would we do a prorata share of the number of, the total amount divided by the people, and if it's more than four hundred dollars, it would be four, more than four hundred dollars, and we would look to Wilmington to support that, or?
So we're not, we're not anticipating that the-
It wouldn't be more than four hundred dollars.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't, um, the costs, right, at least initially, that we wouldn't be in any additional costs to the program.
Okay.
By adding these students.
Correct, correct.
And so four hundred dollars would fully cover-
These co-ops are two-year, they're two-year, two-year deals anyway.
So there's not a marginal increase in cost based on additional students.
Correct, correct. It's a two-year commitment. We could decide after the second year.
Would we wear North Reading uniforms?
Beating suits.
We would.
Well, again, we have a, we have a girls' co-op team where we had some of the best players and it's not the North Reading team.
We're, we're the host.
We're the host, we're the host school.
In this case, we are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. Um, which league would we participate in? Cape Anne?
This would be Cape Anne, yes.
And Wilmington-
As the whole school.
Wilmington students do not pay a user fee for any of their sports. So would Wilmington School District be giving us money toward the program, or how would that work?
It's up to them.
The student, the student, the user fee is paid by the student.
But that's up to them if Wilmington wants to-
So you would bill Wilmington whatever their cost is?
The four hundred times the nine.
Number of students.
But the students would be, would not be-
Right, they would elect to either pay or subsidize. That'd be up to them.
Right.
Other questions, comments? Okay. We have a motion to approve the North Reading High School Cooperative Swim Team.
Make a motion to approve the North Reading Cooperative Swim Team with Wilmington High School.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. LaPrat. And now before we go back to the beginning again, since we have a community member here on number six, let's, so why don't we, uh, try to go to the performing arts user fee as well? Mr. Connolly, would you mind?
Yes.
Speaking on the performing arts user fee?
So in your packets this evening, um, we included a memorandum with a couple of, uh, several financial spreadsheets that we hoped would kind of provide some, some background as well as some framework with what we're recommending, um, this evening in terms of making, uh, some recommendations towards the addition of a performing arts user fee. And, um, as Mr. Webster shared with you at the June eleventh meeting, um, you know, recent changes to the adopted, uh, NREA contract with, um, the Teachers Association in North Reading, as well as the, the school committee, did include sort of a restructuring in some sorts of the extracurricular, um, you know, stipend amounts and, and extracurricular activities, as well as the, the performing art activities as well, with some, some changes to the, the stipend amounts. And in some ways, kind of pulling the performing arts, uh, related activities, um, and separating those into its own, its own, you know, salary schedule and structure. So I think Mr. Webster at this meeting kind of mentioned, as a result of this, uh, adoption of the new contract and the new, the new structure and the new arrangement, that, that there would be a, a proposal at the upcoming meeting, which is this evening, for a, an additional, um, you know, small fee, performing arts user fee to be introduced really at each level next school year. Uh, that would be the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. So, um, the, the memorandum kind of talks about some history that I think we went into some detail of, of that at the last meeting when we talked about the contract. But certainly what we were involved in, both members of the administration, as well as members of, uh, you know, teachers, members of the NREA, had really worked, uh, pretty collaboratively over, over several months leading up to the collective bargaining process to collect a lot of data through some surveys of, um, existing club advisors and so, and so forth about really what the, the weekly and annual hour commitment, uh, was associated with each club. Uh, there was a lot of benchmark, um, and, and data collected through our comparable districts with respect to extracurricular activities, in terms of what some of the other contract language was, what is some of the categorization or, or matrix language was in terms of how other district looked at both extracurricular clubs, as well as performing arts clubs, and, and what the corresponding stipend amounts was, as well as some corresponding user fees were to go along with that. And essentially what we, we did was we created the four categories, um, similar to the categories that exist with the athletic program stipends that had been in the contract for some time, in attempt to create both equitable and kind of market competitive, um, you know, process when dealing with extracurricular and performing arts, you know, activities and their corresponding stipend amounts to, to staff. Um, this also involves segregating the performing arts activities, in some cases recommending new positions and stipend amounts that were competitive within the region and the market of, uh, we compared ourselves to other school districts, certainly that we, uh, compare ourselves with, as well as the, you know, districts that are certainly within this region and in this, in this area. So, you know, the end result was, you know, created, um, a restructuring of, of these stipends in, in the new teacher contract. And this, the work of this committee can really be found on really pages thirty through thirty-five of the new teacher contract. And most of that work was, is also reflected in the spreadsheet analysis that was given, um, in the backups of pages one through six in, in the memorandum and the handout that, uh, was put together in the packet to, for discussion this evening. Uh, but essentially what the proposal is, is that- But essentially what the proposal is, is that we would introduce a new performing arts user fee at the high school of one hundred dollars next year, the middle school of seventy dollars next year, and at the elementary-
Seventy-five, yeah.
I'm sorry, seventy-five dollars next year, and at the elementary school, a sixty-dollar performing arts user fee. We feel that, you know, a lot of analysis and discussion with the administration went into this proposal and why we landed at the proposal we're making this evening and, and what these amounts are. We certainly wanted to accomplish a few objectives in making this recommendation this evening. The first would be, we certainly wanted to meet our FY19 budgeted offset amounts and certainly remain with, within our budget allocations and assumptions that we made during the FY19, nineteen budget process. And that required making several assumptions on what the student participations and enrollment would be in, in these programs. We, we certainly have made the assumption and the assertion that the enrollment and participation would mean trends would remain relatively consistent. Further, we felt that the proposal that, we wanted to make a proposal initially that we ideally would have sort of the, the least impact in terms of adding an additional fee to families. You know, we certainly never want to, you know, introduce new fees, it's something we've, we've tried not to do, but we felt that, you know, this was necessary at this time, given the, the changes to the structure and the contract. And we did feel, you know, this proposal, you know, this evening would have kind of the, the least impact of, of the, the smallest amount of families in terms of asking them to pay, to pay an additional fee while also allowing us to kind of meet our, our budgetary offsets for fiscal year 2019. At this point, the, you know, adding the hundred dollar fee to, to the high school level, you know, we feel, you know, potentially in the range of, you know, sixty to maybe sixty-five students at the high school would, would have to pay an additional hundred dollars that they may, may not be paying currently. Adding the, the seventy-five dollar fee at the middle school level, you know, could potentially impact between, you know, forty and forty-five students of an additional seventy-five dollar fee that they may not be paying currently. And at the elementary level, we actually feel the majority of students participating in drama and the musical and productions over the last few years have actually been accustomed to paying fees, in some cases maybe a little bit less, but in some cases maybe a little bit more of the, the fee that we're recommending this evening. So it's actually the, the same sixty-dollar fee at the, that we're recommending was what the bachelor students, you know, paid that participated in the musical at the bachelor school this, this past, this past month, actually. So we did feel this approach would have the least impact to families at each level. Because this new, this is certainly a new process and there are certainly some unknowns and uncertainties that are, that does exist, and certainly the, the projection of, of this revenue and what the participation and student enrollment would be, we, we did certainly recommend that this proposal would be revisited on an ongoing basis, certainly in the spring of 2019 for fiscal feasibility and, and other adjustments as needed. So there, there was a lot of information included in the spreadsheet tables and some of the analysis and backup of some of the assumptions we were making of how we would both meet the, the projected costs along with, you know, what the general fund and the user fee and potentially in some cases the ticket sales would support. So I'm happy to kind of walk through each page with you, or I'm happy to kind of take questions as needed. You know, I think in some cases, I think it was somewhat self-explanatory what we were looking to accomplish, but, you know, we didn't want to kind of, you know, go from zero to sixty on this. We wanted to, and I think we feel, you know, a fee is, is necessary and we, we wanted to kind of start, start as, as small as we can in order to meet our budgetary offsets and, and, and kind of monitor it on an ongoing basis and see where we're at. So we did feel, you know, the hundred dollar fee at the high school, the seventy-five dollar fee, the fee at the middle school can certainly be considered a, a relatively small impact based on the, the benefits and all the ongoing, you know, how much goes into participating in, in these, you know, plays and musical productions each year.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, as the member of the negotiating team, I just want to make it clear to parents that this fee does not, will not be required for standard band and chorus at elementary, middle, and high school. This is for beyond that, performances, stage band, notorious, plays, et cetera. So this will, so we'll still have standard chorus and band at all three levels of school that do not require fees.
That's correct. So we tried to break it down in, in the spreadsheets of what, what the fee would cover, you know, what the various fees that do exist. So that the two hundred dollar user fee that does exist currently for extracurricular activities, the, the idea behind this proposal is that fee would, would continue at its existing level and there would be an introduction of a new performing arts fee that would cover in most cases at the high school, participation in the musical and the play, a cappella, stage band, flag squad, as well with the, you know, there are several other activities that at both the high school and the middle school, for example, that would be either covered under the existing fee or that no fee applies. And we kind of broke that down in the spreadsheets that was provided. So-
Questions, comments from the committee?
It would only be one time per single year?
Correct, yep.
Doesn't matter how many, from what the-
That's correct. So there was, there were several proposals talked about, but we felt importantly that this, you know, starting out, introducing a new fee that we, we felt, the administration felt it was important that it was just kind of a one-time fixed fee and that would, it would, it would cover you for whether you wanted to do the musical and, you know, a cappella and the other, you know, performing arts, you know, programs that exist.
Is it expectation that what this is being used for, the purpose, is going to meet the need, or am I hearing a little bit that over the years we might have to increase this over time to really meet the expectation?
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna have to be monitored because there's, there's some inherent risk with anything that's new and, and what could happen with the student participation level.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think, I think it's gonna have to be monitored.
I think, I think Michael's right. If you don't mind, I think we're, we're, we're trying to be, we're trying to strike the right balance, I think, with this proposal in that we don't want to suggest a fee that's too high, that it discourages participation, but at the same time, we're trying, you know, so we're trying to be conservative in, in the fee that we're proposing, but I think as Michael said, it's, it's something we suggest we, we're gonna monitor. And, you know, I think we would like it to be that we're sitting here next year saying to all of you that it worked well in a year and we're gonna, we'd like to propose continuing. And that certainly is the goal. We're not, we don't have anything preconceived that we're saying, oh, this is one, one year and then all of a sudden the hammer's gonna drop next year. We're not, we're not anticipating that and we're certainly not going into it with that, with that thinking either. We're, we're hopeful that this will, and I think that's why in the proposal we worded it as, you know, we'll monitor it for its economic feasibility. Like if, if it's working, great. If we have to make an adjustment one way or the other, we would be prepared to recommend that to you.
I think, I think Michael did a great job explaining it, but just to get into a, a few more of the nuances, one of the things that this committee that studied the stipends did was to look at the amount of time that was being put in on each of these clubs and also in the performing arts. And also, one of the comments we heard from a number of people, not only people within the school system, but from parents, is that the amount of time put in, in a lot of the performing arts areas are equal to, if not in some cases exceed the amount of time put in by coach, athletic coaches, but the stipends aren't close. We've significantly increased the stipends in the performing arts department. I think they may be close to tripled, at least, it's at least two and a half times the total number. We've also increased some positions that weren't funded previously that we're funding now. So in order to do that-
And we decreased some.
Right, but, but not in performing arts for the most part.
Across the board.
Right, across the board. The other, on, on the regular stipends for extracurriculars, some of those were decreased, some were increased. Many of the ones that were decreased were decreased because, for example, almost all or all of the club meetings take place during the school day, during whatever, whatever-
Power block.
Power block. So there's no after-school activity, the teacher doesn't have to spend any time after school, et cetera. So, so those are reduced. That kind of broke even pretty much, Michael, correct?
Correct.
The, but, almost same amount of money. But the performing arts was significantly increased.
Correct.
And we will be using some proceeds from the ticket sales for the musical to offset those increases. That's really the main, the main area of revenue that we get-
Correct.
-from the performing arts department.
And it will, just on the accounting side of it, mean the creation of some new revolving accounts to track the user fees and the ticket sales and the payments and so forth. So it will change a little bit of the accounting side of what the business office and the financial operation is.
In fact, it will act similar to the athletic revolving account that we have now where the fee money goes in-
Yeah.
And then a request is made from the athletic director or from a coach or, or whatever, and then Michael approves that request and then the-
Right.
-expense is approved.
Yeah. So once, so once the school committee adopts an official user fee, that kind of makes it fall under section of the law that requires the creation of revolving fund, which will then operate very similar to athletics and work as a budgetary offset for that, for the user fee and the ticket sales and the revenue that's generated from that, that program.
Mr. McGowan?
I find this comparison like apples and oranges. The, the, the list of the club names and, and the, basically the bottom, the, the bottom section that shows the revenue and then the, the expenses against the revenue and the percentage covered, the perform, because the performing arts is on, most of those positions under table two in the high school, for instance, are all focused on the, on one activity, the, the theater, basically, right?
Right.
So I guess I'm just saying that, on the one hand, you can say, well, we're, the user fees for the performing arts are covering twenty-six percent of the-
Yeah, I know what you're getting at.
Expenses. Yep. Versus in the club section, it's covering ninety-two percent of the expenses.
Right.
It's not really a good comparison, right? Because the, the performing arts and especially theater are such an intensive, there's such an intense need for advisors that it's generating a lot of expenses in that one, it was basically one activity. So again, I think this is kind of a communication issue. I think the, the point that Mel made right at the beginning is important, first of all, that the community understand that we're not raising, not charging fees for this, for the regular band and-
Music program.
Right.
Yeah. You know, I think that's a huge communication part of this. I, I think none of us are happy about having to charge fees for these activities, but that is kind of the reality we're faced with, so.
And to that point, if I could, at the bottom of that, what's numbered, page one, we had put a footnote in there to that very point, Mr. McGowan, about those programs that are believed to be part of the curriculum, so to speak, and a real part of the school. So that's the band, the chorus that Mr. Webster referenced, or a service club.
Yep.
You know, there was, you know, a student that belongs to the National Honor Society, for example. You know, we're not gonna charge them the fee.
Yep.
Or, or, you know, Student Leadership Academy, the mentoring program, that's another example. So I think your point is well taken that, you know, that the communication of that message out to people is important for us to convey.
I have a number of common questions, but I know Mrs. Kopke came, so I'll defer to her for some questions.
I was just wondering, Mike, if you could share the plans for the elementary drama program?
Sure.
That's kind of been on my radar, specifically because my daughter attends a school that does not participate in a pretty big drama production. And I know there was an attempt this year to create a program, but it was pretty much self-funded through enrichment dollars and it far exceeded the sixty-dollar user fee as far as my pocketbook. I think it was close to maybe three hundred what we paid for the full year for drama. So I'm wondering what the plans are moving forward for the drama program?
That's a great question. So the idea is that now that this framework has been officially adopted by the ratification of the, the contract and then with the, with the creation of, we hope would be the recommended fee this evening, we feel like it would create a consistent structure for each elementary school to then follow. And there would be a consistent, similar fee as well as the, the same opportunities for the, the musical with the same, you know, stipends and staff involvement in terms of assistance and, and direction of those students that are participating at each elementary school. So we do feel with the adoption of the recommendation this evening, as well as with the framework put in place by the adoption of the new, the new teacher contract, that it does allow for consistency in terms of what parents or students will be asked to pay for that experience at each level. I think what we would have to certainly, to, you know, work out is, you know, how many schools, you know, is it on a somewhat of a rotating schedule? I think, I think what may happen is you might see maybe two musicals a year and then kind of a two, a two and one and, you know, there might be one, it might not, I don't think all three would happen every year.
Right.
So that, so that's the idea, but at least it would be offerings either every other year at each school. So you might have two elementary plays or musicals in one year and then, and then one the next. But I think what would be achieved is the consistency in terms of the user fee charged to parents for that, for a very similar experience with the same level of professional staff and guidance throughout the process.
But now with the fees though, so the fees are going for the stipend, there's other fees associated with these programs, costumes and anything else that's needed. So would those be above and beyond charged to parents? Or would that, where would that, where would the money-
Costumes, they, they don't pay for the costumes now.
They also, they, they do program booklets-
Right.
You know, fundraising and issues, that wouldn't-
Yeah.
I wouldn't think that that would go away, right.
The idea is though, this fee would, would be what they would, they would pay. There might be some other fundraising or some other, you know, solicitation of donations or gifts to help supplement, but the idea is that they would pay the, the recommended fee and, you know, and that, that would cover, you know, everything.
Program, program participation.
They might be asked to pay additionally for like a T-shirt or something, a production staff T-shirt-
Okay.
For their, for participating, but this would be the user fee that they would pay.
Julie, do you have other questions?
It makes me very happy. Thank you.
I have a few questions, I don't know if you can answer, but has, I know that the committee that looked into this was in favor of this. Has anybody spoken to the maskers or the, are the parents in there?
Maskers is a hundred percent, maskers push this.
Okay. Even the members or just like the, the head of the maskers?
I'm not sure, but I know the-
Advisor.
The advisor.
Okay.
Pushed it.
With regarding to, with fees, I know there's a cap on various fees, like the athletics and the user, you know, for families. Would this, is there a family cap on, that would go towards, like if you're playing, if some students doing sports and some doing regular activities and some doing maskers, is there any combined cap or just caps on each one individually and this would be above and beyond?
Yeah, we didn't, we, it was discussed, I think, just in terms of, you know, it's not part of this recommendation, it's something we're advising on doing currently. You know, which is why we're trying to keep the, the user fee as, as small as we could and not offering a, a user fee based on, you know, per club or, you know, two hundred dollars for the first, you know, play and then a hundred dollars for the second play if you want to do, do two, so.
Michael, I just want to-
Too much of a, it would just impact the revenue that we're trying to-
Yeah.
This fee's much less than what was recommended by the committee that came up with the, the new stipends. It's much less. If we were implementing that, we, the kids who could be paying, would be paying up to three hundred dollars at the high school. An additional, right.
Correctional. Right, so it-
So this does not incorporate a family cap proposal for, for extracurricular?
Yeah. And then with, at the elementary, you mentioned that the batch already had a fee? I was, I was just curious if this would be the first fee at, at an elementary to-
No. So the little school paid fifty-two years ago, so it might be a small increase for them because they would be due to put on a play next year. But the batch paid the fee that we're recommending of sixty dollars this evening, already this year.
And I think the enrichment fee was seventy-five.
Seventy, yeah. Or seventy for every six weeks and every-
Over the course of the year, it was substantially more.
No, but one, one enrichment program was seventy.
Right.
For six weeks.
Correct.
So we paid-
Right.
-over three hundred dollars.
This is streamlining that.
Okay. Other thoughts, questions, concerns?
What is the mechanism, I guess this is a general question, one of the things, many, many things I don't know yet, for students, families who, who are disadvantaged economically, who can't afford fees?
Yep, so once, so when a school committee adopts the fee, it would follow the financial assistance policy. So if a child qualifies for free lunch, they would receive a full waiver. They qualify for reduced lunch, they receive a, a half waiver. And then if, there's also another, if those students that are slightly above those guidelines, families but still want to be considered for assistance, there's another application process- process and they could receive, receive a partial discount, up to 25%. So that, that would apply, apply here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the maskers are a point of pride for the community and I just, I think it's great to be able to have the arts programs that we have here. Like Mr. McGowan said, I wish we didn't have to charge fees for it, but a lot of times there's, you know, you're prioritizing things and, you know, this is a way to be able to keep those programs and expand them, so.
And I think consistency is important. It's a, it's a big activity.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no more comments, can I have a motion to accept the performing arts user fees?
Move to accept the administration's proposal to impose performing arts user fees of $100 at the high school of 70, 70 or 75 dollars? $75 at the middle school and $60 at the elementary schools. Oh, actually, I'd also add to that, for a one-year period to be reviewed following the 2018-19 school year.
Sounds good.
My only question, in the proposal, the, it also talks about maintaining the extracurricular, middle school, high school activity fee at $200. We don't need any proposal for that, correct?
No, no change.
That's no change. Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Addressing all the issues of the people in the crowd, we're going to go back to the continued business.
The crowd?
There's a huge crowd today. Is there any update, Mr. Bernard, on the MSBA SSBC?
I have no update, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Moving on, the policy subcommittee. Mrs. Boutwell and Mr. McGowan, one of you like to take that and explain what we're voting on?
Sure thing. This is the second reading.
Correct.
For the, the policy related to residency, as it applies to new families coming into town. And you'd like me to summarize the changes again, or?
I mean, quickly, I mean, I think this is something that was been drafted by our attorneys, I believe.
It was drafted by the attorneys. As you can see, the, the major pieces here are the changes to the Responsible Adult affidavit, as well as adding a form that was listed in the policy already, or the landlord's shared tenancies affidavit. So that was a gap that we had, and we're filling that by producing this form.
Any questions? Do we, should we vote on these separately? The revised, the revision and then the, the new affidavit?
That makes sense.
Yeah?
Second reading, please.
Okay. So we have a motion-
So it's exhibit two and exhibit three.
Okay. Exhibit two of JBCA, so JBCA E2.
Correct.
We have a motion to accept for a second reading, JBCA exhibit two, the Responsible Adult affidavit.
I so move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And now second, can I have a motion to accept new policy, exhibit three of JBCA, entitled Landlord/Shared Tenancies Affidavit?
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we're up to number seven of new business, I believe. Student Activity Audit Report. Mr. Connolly, could you guide us through this?
Yes, thank you. So in your packet this evening, I did include the Student Activity Internal Audit Report, which was performed by the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, otherwise known as MASBO. So consisting with both school committee policy as well as state regulations, the district engaged MASBO to perform the required annual internal audit this past spring on student activity accounts. This report was included in your packet. Just to remind and update the committee that as part of the new regulations for student activities, we are required to perform an internal audit every year, as well as an outside audit by a certified CPA firm once every three years. So the, the outside audit by the certified CPA firm, which was Melanson Heath, was performed last year. So this year, in order to meet the internal audit obligation, we engaged MASBO. In previous years, we actually had the town accountant, Liz Work, perform the audit. So we're hoping to get on a kind of an every other year, we would, we would do the CPA audit firm, you know, once every three years, and then have, you know, maybe MASBO perform the audit, which is mainly done by retired school business officials, and then go back to having the town, you know, Liz Work, perform the audit. It was deemed that myself and other members of either my staff, I was kind of too close to it to perform, perform the audit. So MASBO report is, is included. Overall, I thought the audit went very, very well. I was very kind of pleased with the report and, and the outcome. As is pretty typical, when any review audit is prepared, is, is completed, you know, you're going to see a few, you know, findings or recommendations for improvements. And I thought the, the few, the three findings that were reflected in the report, I, I see those as being relatively fairly easy to implement and, and work on, as I stated in the, in the cover memo with the report. But overall, I was pleased with the results of the audit, especially the statement that the auditor made where he felt we did a very good, good job in a short timeframe responding to the recommendations made last year by Melanson Heath. So, you know, Melanson Heath came out and did a very, you know, thorough, thorough audit last spring, which required some changes to our school committee policy, which we administered throughout the summer and early fall through the policy subcommittee and adopted those in, in late summer months, early fall last year. And I, I think over the course of this school year, I, I was certainly pleased with how well the, the staff that are involved in the accounts, the principals, certainly my office, club advisors, kind of responded to, to the task of meeting those requirements. So that, you know, the three findings that are reflected in the report, you know, I felt were, again, relatively sort of, sort of minor and things we can kind of easily adapt and work on, as well as some of them just being kind of challenging in the nature of, of working with student activity accounts and working with the various people that are involved, club advisors and school principals and so forth, and support staff, that, you know, it's, it's, we certainly make our best effort to collect cash receipts and deposit everything within 24 hours, but it's just going to be, just the nature of it's going to be challenging to do so. So I think that was the first, one of the first findings that it discussed. But certainly some of the other things we felt, we can certainly work on, you know, the, the recommendation to have our club advisors also kind of either receive a copy and sign off on the certified, the quarterly certified reconciliations that we certify on a quarterly basis that are actually now presented to school committee and then officially certified on a, you know, having the club advisors also receive a copy and sign off on those, I thought it was a, was a fair recommendation and something we, we can certainly put into practice. You know, making sure cash receipts and so forth are just kept, you know, in a, in a locked, stored in a locked safe, which we certainly do, and, and just trying to make sure we, we receive all checks on our, in, within 24 hours. So that's, that's always going to be a somewhat of a challenge, but I think we'll, we'll certainly make our best effort to, to meet those requirements. And then the finding number three was just, you know, we felt this is a, a small, you know, change, something we've already spoken to the middle school and the elementary school staff about and just, that's just using that receipt turnover form when, when all, you know, receipts and so forth are turned over to the school principal's office for deposit. So we feel like that's a small, something, something small we can work on and certainly improve on, on a very, very, you know, short turnaround. Overall, I was definitely pleased to see the commendations that were reflected on page three of the audit, that we've done a good job responding to Melanson Heath as a report from last year, as I noted, and they made comments that they felt the school committee policy, you know, manual and, and policy that does exist is, is up to date in accordance with the state, state regulations and requirements. And then page four, the final page of the report, just, it's just some general advisories in terms of, you know, nothing noting that we're not doing, you know, nothing noted for improvements or recommendations or findings, they're just things that, that they have, have referenced in terms of what the law states, in terms of working with student activity accounts, in terms of how gift accounts are, are handled, how vending machine receipts are handled, in terms of how we solicit bids and quotes in, in chapter 30B, all those things we're compiling, we're complying with and certainly doing. The one, the, the first one on the top of page four talks a little bit about maybe taking the, the acceptance of the law, chapter 71, section 47, to the next level and maybe just officially having the school committee vote to adopt that law. I, I kind of thought it was, you know, embedded in the fact that we've adopted a policy that references that law and we voted and approved that policy, but, you know, he felt it wouldn't be, though it may not be required, it wouldn't be a bad idea to take it to the next level and officially adopt that we recognize that, that, that master in a law, chapter 71, section 47. So perhaps at the start of next school year, when we, or when we do certify the end-of-year balances, which will probably be at the July meeting, when we close out on June 30th, that I would entertain a motion for that, for that official adoption.
I found that curious and, I mean, I think if it's state law, we sort of have to comply with it. I don't know why we have to officially accept the state law that's in existence, but-
I mean, that was a debate I had.
...
I had with them as well, so.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to-
Advisory, you know.
And I just wanted to recognize them, and I know you've done a lot of work on this. I was on the policy subcommittee last year and the whole process of how money is received had to be, had to be overhauled and new forms created. And just to know that in one year and the, kind of the first attempt of doing it, that it was all done properly and that, you know, pretty much throughout the district it was complied with is just, you know, really, really good to see. And, you know, I think you deserve a lot of credit for that, Mr. Connolly, for, you know, creating the, creating the documents, creating the forms, the process and making sure that it was implemented properly.
Great, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Certainly been a, a good effort for a team approach, certainly by the, the administration that are involved, the, the school, secretary staff that's involved, and, and the teachers and faculty, and certainly the business office and, and my office, worked very hard.
Questions or comments?
Do you, do you do any spot checking during the year on any of these issues, or what, how do you handle all that stuff?
We do. So I think one of the things that the, the, the certifying, the official formalizing that process of reconciling, you know, the accounts at least quarterly, has certainly created that kind of that spot checking approach. I'm certainly more involved. We, we certainly were doing that monthly, but it was more informally, and we continue to do that. But now that we actually formally sit down and there's this, you know, my, someone, my, my office prepares it, I sign off on that and we have that, it allows for that, that checking mechanism to be better, better approach.
Yep.
So that, that does exist, so that there is some spot checking there. And the other thing that, because, you know, we kind of had that extra layer of, of control and checks and balances in the sense that, you know, the, the, each individual school does not have their own checking account, so, and a lot, which is, which the law actually enables them to do, but we don't have that, so everything does flow through my office. So there's actually no expense request for a dispersment of check that I don't see, because I, I do sign those, so I, I am seeing everything. And we're catching most things before a check is dispersed, whereas if there was a checking account, we'd be, we'd be seeing those things after the fact and having to have those conversations. So I think, I thought that was a good thing that the district did five or six years ago, and, you know, we've been able to turn things around and not develop any, you know, hardship, timeliness or any issues there. We've, we've developed a good, a good, you know, workflow. So that, that, that does exist there as well.
Okay. This is the whole report, right?
Yeah.
Not just an executive summary or something?
This is the whole report, that we, what you have is what I received. So it's, you know, I think it was a, a four-page report, but, you know, it's, the more thorough one is, is the Melanson Heath one that's done every three years. This was more-
Do you have a digital copy of that you could send me?
Melanson Heath, yeah. I'm happy to just give it to you.
Just to take a look.
Yeah.
I mean, the big, the big white spot for where he edited it.
Yeah. I didn't know, I just, sometimes, sometimes they, you know, just be, you know.
Okay. Now, if there's any action needed on this, so moving on to routine matters.
Mrs. Boutwell, would you like that too? Would you like that audit report, the full audit report?
Yeah, I can actually do that. I can provide that.
Okay. So we can accept minutes even if those things is not here, right?
You can.
Okay, so, you know, we have one set of minutes to accept, May 21st, I believe was, was that the first meeting for?
That was the reorganization, yes.
Yeah.
And Mr. McGowan and-
I thought it looked familiar.
And Boutwell. Does, does anything look problematic in it? Any changes?
Names are spelled correctly?
I don't remember signing up for all those subcommittees. It's fine.
Must have blacked out.
Okay. Well, if there's no changes-
That was your chance.
If there's no changes, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the May 21st, 2018 open session?
I will move to accept the minutes of the May 21st, 2018 open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Moving on, the budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Thank you. So in your packet this evening was the June budget update, which essentially summarizes our financial activity through the middle of June. The, the report, as we've done in the past, is broken into, into two pages reflecting expense activity and payroll activity. At this point in the year, we're certainly in the process of closing out the fiscal year and viewing, I'm happy to report that the majority of expenses have remained within budgeted ranges. As we have discussed in the past and as we prepared during the fiscal 2019 budget development process, we are in the process of, of finishing up prepaying special education tuitions to meet the amount that we forecasted and planned for during the fiscal year 2019 budget process. That budget was predicated upon our ability to identify $150,000 of, of prepayments. I'm happy to report that we were able to meet and, and even exceed that amount as, as we have closed out fiscal year 2019. So that will help provide some level of flexibility during fiscal year 2009 to help address any unforeseen, you know, costs that we may not have been able to budget for during the process. As a reminder, the law does allow us to prepay up to three months of out of district tuition costs, and we've been able to, to meet a, an amount that we forecasted during the process and fortunately been able to exceed that amount each, each year over the last few years. We certainly monitored the cost of utilities closely, you know, especially at, we continue to do so at the, at the middle school, high school campus as well, and I'm happy to report that the, the, the cost of our utilities will remain within budget. We've talked about the food service program each year. I'm happy to report that we closed out the month of May with a net profit of $5,300. We were pleased with the program's performance during the month of May as we exceeded our projected profit for the month by close to $1,000. The meals sold per day throughout the district were up on average of, by 9.7% across the five schools when compared to last year. So now through the month of May, we are operating a little over $1,000 behind a, a projected amount that would yield a break-even program. We are hoping to have a, a, a strong month of June. If we were to earn a profit of $4,200 in June, we would break even. So those are numbers we'll be looking at in, in the coming days and in the coming weeks ahead. On the payroll side, you know, we certainly experienced a need throughout this school year to hire some long-term substitutes to fill extended leave of absences and number of positions this school year, so that certainly led to, you know, some additional costs in the substitute budget. But certainly due to attrition, leave of absences, in some cases, staff turnover, there were funds available in the teacher, special education, paraprofessional and custodial line items that we were able to repurpose elsewhere. And overall, payroll projections were very close to our budgeted line items. So as you can see by the report, we are operating at this point only with a small amount of available funds as we prepare to complete and officially close out the fiscal year. We actually have until July 13th to do so, so we'll be working on that over the next three weeks. And I anticipate that will, there won't be, you know, much available funds left at the, at the end of that process. But overall, I think the district has, are in, you know, a solid financial standing. Things are certainly, you know, tight as we, as we know, as we head into fiscal year 2019, but we have, we were able to achieve the carryover funds that were identified during fiscal year 2019. were identified during fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget development process during the closeout of two thousand and eighteen. So at the, my hope is that, that the July nineteenth meeting, that Thursday meeting in July, I'll, I'll have a final fiscal year two thousand and eighteen report for you. It's, it's, it might be a tight turnaround because we'll be, still be paying bills right up until that July thirteenth date and, and seeing where we're at, so if I can't have it then, it'll certainly be one in, in the August meeting.
Okay. Questions, comments? My only question, well, I had two questions, I can't remember one. One doesn't really relate to this, but for some reason the DocuSign is going to the junk folder now.
It's just yours, it's, I think it's just you and Rich.
I think it's just me and Rich. You guys are all getting it.
Now that I know it.
Diana now, Diana now too.
So I don't know if you have to whitelist that or do something.
I got it, I haven't had a problem.
Save it to your account.
I don't know if she knew it was.
It's your N R P S account, right?
Well, for the first year on, on the committee, I didn't have an issue.
If you, it, it should work if you move it back into your inbox, it should learn, but it doesn't seem to, well, I shouldn't say that, we'll see what, we'll see what tomorrow looks like.
If you ever don't get my signature, I probably.
I can have our network administrator.
Let us know.
Look at that activity.
It might be because Gmail just upgraded.
Yeah.
If you're using Gmail, I don't use Gmail, so.
Yeah.
I had to use Gmail to get that, no?
I get it on my personal account.
Oh.
I get it on both, my personal and my Gmail.
Main.
I have it forwarded from my Gmail account to my personal.
You could, um, someone, one of you could forward me the email that's going into your junk.
What it looks like.
What it looks like, just so I can have Nicholas, our IT administrator, investigate that.
Yeah, I'll get it afterwards. And then the, what do we prepay last year versus?
We paid, we prepaid.
Was one fifty was the goal this year and we're a little over that? What was the goal last?
So we prepaid two hundred and fifty thousand last year and we did that again this year.
Okay.
So the goal last year was a hundred thousand, the goal this year was a hundred and fifty. We had updated by about fifty thousand.
But if we, but we, the goal of a hundred, we did two fifty last year and we're going to do less than that this year then?
Yeah, so we was one fifty, we're only, we were able to do two, a little over two fifty is what we were able to do. So we were, we were about a hundred thousand more than what, than what we had forecasted. So things are definitely, definitely a little bit tighter getting, heading into nineteen.
Quite a bit tighter.
Yeah, and, and this actually is, is potentially, you know, there's some costs that potentially are percolating out there that we'll, we'll have to see what happens.
It'll be a difficulty here, I bet. No more questions and staffing update, Mr. Bernard?
I do, Mr. Chairman, so I'm pleased to announce the following new staff in addition to those that I announced at the meeting on June eleventh. At the Hood School, we're welcoming Kelly Costa as a grade-three classroom teacher. Kelly has been working with us as a parent professional at the Hood School. We've also hired a new grade-five teacher at the Little School, Catherine Polkari. She similarly had worked in the district a few years ago as a long-term substitute, a stint at both the Hood School and at the Batch Elder School, but has been working in Melrose for a few years and chose to come back to North Reading. At the High School, we've hired a year-long, long-term substitute in the Business Department, Robert Bryant. We have a long-term substitute Spanish teacher for the start of the school year till about the November break, Thanksgiving break, in Paul Burdette. Matthew Sikarsky has been hired as a new math teacher at the High School and Tracy Nicholas as a new nurse at the High School.
Paul Burdette's a North Reading grad, isn't he?
Paul Burdette is a North Reading guy, yes he is.
Soccer player, Paul?
Soccer player, very interesting background, having served in the Peace Corps in Guadalupe, and, yeah, very excited.
How long ago was he grad roughly?
Ten years, maybe, twelve years.
I would say Paul, his brother Tommy was a senior my first year, so oh, four, he might have graduated like, yeah, oh, maybe two thousand and ten, something like that?
No, I think, I think he's a little older than, my daughter was two thousand and ten, so.
Two thousand and eight?
Yeah, two thousand and eight.
Maybe four years behind Tommy, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Nice family, very nice family.
I know, I know on staffing, I know that the Little School's very sad to see Mrs. Levitt leave, but she got a principal.
She did.
Her first principal position.
In Reading.
And so in Reading, and so I think that's great for her, but sad for us.
Yes, that, that position has been posted, her, her teaching position, we have not filled that yet.
Okay. Bids and donations, Mr. Webster, would you like to take them?
Before we read them though, I have a question, John. I'm, I'm extremely grateful for the ten thousand donation at, by the Hood Parents Association. I guess I don't understand why we're, we're buying water fountains.
They, the, my understanding is they identified this as something they wanted to take on. It's the, similar to what we have here with a water filler type bottle and it was something they wanted to add.
They, they felt.
The Parents Association, it came from their desire to fundraise.
I guess I understand, I, I find it odd, that, that's all. It's an infrastructure part of.
There are water fountains there.
I was gonna say, it wasn't a glaring need so much.
No, I think it was a desire of their booster group, their parent organization, to want to upgrade them.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I agree with Mr. Webster, I think that.
So they can, they can do that, I, I, I mean, that's like a building project almost. I guess, I guess I'm just confused by the, again, I'm not saying we don't want the money, we don't, I just confuse that, that's.
I understand, we, we spoke about it, but.
I mean, they can do it if we accept it and I think it's, you know, it's.
They chose to fundraise.
It's not gonna add any additional, you know, foreseeable costs.
I'm surprised it's actually that little. I mean, come right down to it, basically.
Yeah, that is a pretty.
Four, is it four?
Five.
Five?
I think it's five.
It's pretty cheap, five.
With the plumbing and everything that's involved?
Based on what I've seen.
They're replacing existing.
Right, so they're not, you know, like creating new plumbing, but still.
It is a proposal, I mean, we have a proposal that matches that.
Based on how I've seen from what they cost up here for the new school building project, that's really, that's a real bargain, based on what we had to pay the new school. Okay, I just wanted to ask about that, all right. Make a motion to accept with gratitude a donation of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from the Hood Parents Association to purchase ten stand-up desks to be utilized across all grade levels at the Hood School.
I second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
Then I make a motion to accept with great gratitude ten thousand dollar donation from the Hood Parents Association to furnish and install five new water filtration fountains at the J Turner Hood Elementary School throughout the Hood School for the benefit of all students and staff.
I second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Okay, subcommittee updates. The Athletics Subcommittee met on June twelfth. Mr. Webster and Miss Bowwell, report.
You wanna get a report or?
Sure.
Go ahead. I like to give the new members some exposure.
There you go.
Thank you. It, uh, it was my first subcommittee for the Athletics Subcommittee, so it was interesting to listen in and absorb. We did review the budget briefly. I know that there was a discussion quite a bit about the dugouts in the vocational school supporting the creation of an overhang.
Right.
For those dugouts.
Yep.
And it seemed like that was something that was being discussed.
I think we're.
Is it?
I don't know, the school committee wasn't gonna vote on it, the Northeast Vocals Committee, right?
Yes, and I have a meeting set, believe it or not, on September fifth, the first day of school for our students, the vocational school folks are coming over here to meet with me about the, the desire for the design.
Great.
Okay, fabulous. So that's, that's gonna be great for the softball.
We're expecting that to be a fall, a fall completed project, yes.
Okay. We did talk a little bit about the facilities maintenance and some of the activities that True Green was performing and trying to get rid of, I guess there's some fields that really have quite a bit of clover all over them.
Yes.
And trying to get rid of that because it's a nuisance.
Can they come out for my lawn too, please?
Yeah, they really should.
It's probably more expensive though, because we have to use special concentrations for them to use on a school.
A school field.
Property, right, so.
Yeah.
I like to walk on my lawn, it'd probably be good.
And the other two highlights, I'd say, was what, one of the things we addressed tonight, which was the swimming co-op. We started that dialogue and that's why it happened so quickly, 'cause that was just a few weeks ago, so that, that came about quickly. And, and second, we talked about the scoreboards for both the boys' baseball field, but mostly the girls' softball field.
Right.
And being open to potential sponsor.
Right.
To do something in particular for softball.
Yeah, we covered, I think we covered two things. One was a sponsor and the other thing was possibly softball and baseball could collaborate on fundraising.
Collaborate and fund, yeah.
Yeah.
Quite an expensive endeavor.
Right.
Yeah.
To put two new scoreboards in. I mean, the power exists, obviously, for the baseball, existing scoreboard, but we have it brought in for the softball one, but aside from that expense already being covered, the boards themselves are still pretty expensive, but.
You said we did bring in the power?
Yeah, we had the softball, there's power out in kind of the centerfield area. We had that done, hmm, probably a year, year or so ago, maybe a little, little better than a year ago, I think, so the, it's ready to go.
I think the one good thing with the baseball scoreboard though, is that they're, hopefully the, the metal support.
Kind of those.
Poles that are already in place could be used for a new scoreboard.
And we found out that those are very expensive in, in and of themselves, so, yeah, you're right, to have those already there is a help.
Was it, was this where last year there was, the cost of the board isn't as much as the installation?
Correct, that's right, for the softball it was, yeah.
I don't know if there's gonna be enough to support that big video board we're planning.
Right. The, there were a couple other things, Michael did give us a brief update on the new vehicle we're buying.
Right.
We probably won't get that until late this year, early next year because of the timing and when we went to, went to buy it.
Correct, yeah.
And that'll be to transport students of smaller teams. We'll get it in the winter, hopefully, we can use it for freshman basketball, in the spring, use it for, I don't know, track, the smaller track, when smaller groups go off the track meets tennis.
Yeah.
And then we talked about some, a few minor issues, one of them was at the concession stand, with the floor being really slippery when wet. I think Diana had also heard some people talk about that, so we're gonna try to get some mats, I don't know if we've gotten them yet or if you've measured for them.
Yes, I did, I met down there, very shortly thereafter, I don't know if it was the next day. It may have been the next day, I think. So I went down, I met with Wayne Hardicker and Marty Tilton and we took measurements for the concession stand mats. We did not measure for the bathrooms themselves, we think those floors are okay.
Right, 'cause they're kind of, kind of grainy.
Yeah, they are, the concession stand has that too.
I actually meant the bathroom.
Oh, really?
Yeah, when we were, when, the relay for life, when it was raining that.
Did you notice it there too?
Yeah, I didn't go into the concession area, you know, it was in, people coming in and out of the bathroom, whenever you would go in, they would say, be careful, it's very slippery in there.
Oh, okay.
So sorry, I didn't clarify.
Yeah, I, that, you know what, we can, we can address that.
Measure for that, yeah.
It's small, you know, they're smaller.
I was just worried, you know, someone slips falls.
Yeah, right.
Comes out.
Sure, no, 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 that's, that's why I think we went down right away, but.
Reliable.
We, we did go in the bathrooms, but we thought it was okay 'cause of the grit, but I think if it gets wet, it might.
And it's a layer of water.
Yeah, no, that we could do that.
Yeah.
And the last thing I wanted to mention, it's not related to the, directly to the committee, is just the heartbreaking loss for the softball team. Mr. Vennecy and I took the drive down to Taunton. I'll never wanna be in a car with Jerry for two and a half hours in traffic again, he was driving too. And, you know, the fascinating thing was, I think we had the better team, the girls seemed a little jittery, really long drive, and, you know, we played the fifth-largest high school in the state, which I just don't understand how the MIAA places a high school with twenty-one hundred and fifty students in the same division as North Reading High School. And I know they give the vocational schools a little leeway because they travel from different towns, et cetera, but that just seemed, and I've, I've emailed the MIAA like I've emailed them on numerous other occasions, all the other occasions, I didn't get any response. Today, I just got a bounce back because their email box is full, so, I just asked.
Emails from you?
No, no, it may be.
General, oh.
General, no.
Recruiter, sorry.
I, I simply asked them two things, I said, the venue, Taunton High School's a nice field, but, I mean, to me, you don't have a semifinal state championship game where you have fans standing around the fence in the outfield, that's just not, compared to what we were playing at in Lowell, and so I addressed the venue and I also addressed the issue of how do you have a school with, that has a thousand and fifty girls, well, we have eight hundred students, how are we playing them in a tournament game? I don't expect an answer ever, but.
How did this, was it close to hold time or was it just?
We fell behind, we closed the gap to six to four, but we couldn't.
At one point, there was six to one, right?
Yeah, it was six to one at one point, yeah.
Good comment, Mr. Bernard.
I was just gonna add, if you don't mind, I think another item that came up briefly at the Athletics Subcommittee meeting was about the AEDs.
Oh, right.
Defibrillators, so, and we are in full compliance, but I think we, I think I had talked about and encouraged Mr. Lepret to make, to reach out to a contact, Michael Callahan, that's been very generous through his foundation and his systems, so we are going, going to be getting two additional portable AED devices and we, we're looking into having the one that's inside the facility in the team room building, put on the outside.
Right.
We think it might make more sense to have that more visible.
That makes a lot of sense.
But it's in addition to the two.
Right.
Portable ones.
A lot of times that building could be closed and.
Correct.
No access to.
We may need a new cabinet, I'm not sure what the cabinet's like, like I hear they're alarmed.
Yeah.
But we would be, but just so you know, that we did pursue that and there's a couple more coming, which is a very nice donation for us, and they've donated, Michael Callahan has donated a number of AEDs over the years, so.
I have a question, the, the sunscreen dispensers, are they still at the high school field?
So I believe we have two, one has been installed, I don't know if the other one is, but we have a second one, it was downstairs the last I saw.
Are they, I'm just wondering, are they kept, are they kept filled over the summer when we're, people aren't here, 'cause there's people that use.
Well, you know, I mean, it's.
It wouldn't be up to us, I mean, it's, it's.
We got those through a grant.
Yeah. They keep them, do they keep them?
I would check with, with Marty Tilton, 'cause that's a.
Those are ours.
Yeah, but it's, but they maintain the field.
You, you're saying about supplying the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't think in the summer we're gonna.
Where it's their activity.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
Just wondering, 'cause I think, I mean, it's great to have it, but if there are activities there and it runs out, just random thought.
I just think that during the summer, for the most part, Parks and Rec. I just think that during the summer, for the most part, Parks and Rec.
I know what you're saying.
Pays the closest attention to that field, because we don't have any activities there until August, mid-August, probably, mid to late August.
Makes more sense.
Yeah.
And then the NORCAM update. Mr. Webster, you will be very happy. So NORCAM, we had their annual meeting and nothing of significance, but then at the end, they submitted a proposal to us. They would like to start broadcasting more activities from North Reading, including sporting events. The biggest challenge they have is they only have three full-time people, so their proposal is that if we can find, you know, students or parents that are interested in learning how to use the equipment, that will, you know, they'll run some training sessions for them, people can sign up and, you know, go and broadcast, and they'll even help with the editing or do the editing for us. Some of the challenges will be that there are fees for certain activities. MIAA charges broadcast fees for some programs in particular playoffs, so unless there's, you know, unless we have fundraising to do that, it'll be challenging. But I sent the proposal to Mr. Bernard, he, as he usually does, jumped on it right away. We're over the weekend with emailing, and, Mr. Bernard, perhaps you want to update on what the next steps are?
Yeah, just, no, so I, I think it was, it was an interesting proposal, and so we've set a meeting, I've set a meeting up with Rob Carbone, whom some of you know from NORCAM, for July 5th. He's going to come to my office. I had some suggestions to the proposal, some things that I thought might, we might want to tweak a little bit in terms of when the meetings, the informational meetings would be held. I suggested that we involve the middle school as well, because we have a pretty vibrant video production program there, and, and I think it would be, you know, it also opens up possibilities for more people to participate, so I think there's some potential for something good to come of this, so we'll be, we'll be working on it starting in July.
I mean, they seemed very open to whomever it was, whether it's parents or students, they just thought that students, you know, may be interested. They said they could support, you know, community hours, service hours for people that are willing to do that, but, you know, they want to put more programming on from, you know, from athletics or other events that happen at the high school, and so I thought that was encouraged.
Yeah, I agree.
Definitely result in some budding broadcasters.
Yes. I mean, it's, it's, it's good, it's good that they want to get involved.
Yeah.
Okay. Subcommittee schedule, policy subcommittee, sounds like there are a little bit later risers than the previous, the previous group, but.
Not about rising, about getting there.
Exactly.
8:30 AM on Tuesday, July 17th. Administrative report, Mr. Bernard?
Mr. Chairman, I do. So there's a few things, and I left you all a little packet, right? You all have that?
Yeah. Why was this in the packet, too, by the way?
I'll get to that. It's at the end of your report, right here.
There we go.
Did you not see this? The yellow?
No, I didn't.
So I thought, a little shout-out to the cast and crew of the Batch Elder School's performance of Giants in the Sky. They, the fourth and fifth graders did a really nice job. I, I think, did you go on Friday? Yeah, I went there Friday night.
I know I'm biased, but I was blown away.
I thought it was really, it was great, and I know, Michael, you went on Saturday, right? The students did a really great job.
Imagine there was that many fourth and fifth graders together.
Yeah.
And even the ones like in the background were engaged with each other in the whole acting, like not.
They had such fun with each other, and there was some really nice messages in that, in that play, and.
Questioning whether it was truly fourth and fifth graders.
Yeah, yeah, it was really good, and it was, it was a good crowd Friday night. Did you have a good crowd Saturday?
Yeah, it was a good crowd Saturday, yeah, at almost every seat.
And so I just, I felt it was worth acknowledging that the students, their teachers, Mrs. Di and Mrs. Larson from the music department, Mrs. Shaw from the entertainment that helped with the scenery and all, they did a really, really nice job, so I just, I thought it was nice to mention. And Mr. LaPret mentioned a little bit earlier in his presentation to you all, but I didn't want to overlook the, the high school's athletic program, being the recipient of the Highland Trophy for the fourth consecutive year, it's really a very nice honor, and today, as Mr. LaPret, I just noticed I have a typo there, sorry, trophy. Mr. LaPret mentioned that we had a photo taken at the high school this morning with a lot of the student athletes and some coaches and some pretty, I'll say, avid and rabid fans attended as well, so it should be, should be a nice photo in the paper on Thursday. So congratulations to the students, because I think it's one of those things that really, you know, brings together the, the athletic performance, but it brings together the sportsmanship, along with the academics through GPAs of our students, it's, it was a nice, a nice honor, and to get it four years in a row is pretty special.
A nice honor, and a nice, and a really great achievement.
In a great what?
A great achievement.
Yeah, a great achievement, I agree, it really is. So congratulations to, to all. I attached for you, so we're making some very good progress with the, with the NRPS app, so from my prior presentation to you, and again, I really need to thank, now going, after tomorrow will be a senior at the high school, Michael Tyrell, whose last day is a junior tomorrow, has been working very closely with Dr. Downs and me, and has done some really nice work. So what you're seeing in the screenshots is what each of the, the apps for those, the pages for those schools under the app will look like, so I think with my last presentation, I think the plus portals in the lunch menus were some of the suggested buttons to be on those pages, so what we're looking to do is, is, it's, we are ready right now to roll the app out, but it's only for an Android device. There's a little bit, there's a couple of extra hoops we have to go through in order to have it be compatible with an Apple device, so we anticipate that being resolved fairly soon, and we're gonna be looking to roll this out in July, kind of a soft rollout, to have people play around with and give us feedback on, with the idea that in August we would, we would be up and running and ready for its use for the new school year.
And can I ask one question?
Sure.
What's the anonymous tip?